Yeah.
I think. Thank you, Mr. Gager. Okay, there, okay. Sorry, little technical difficulty. All right, so welcome, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call to order this Livingston City Commission meeting on September 3rd. It is 5:34 PM. Roll call, please.
Chair Cale.
Here.
Vice Chair Newt.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Wilich.
Here. You have the call.
Thank you. We'll start our meeting off like we do with all our meetings with general public comment. This is public comment for items that are not on the agenda or items that are within the consent items list. So if folks have public comments for either items on the agenda or things in the consent item, they will be able to do that at this time. I will remind folks that the that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. We do limit all public comments to four minutes, so you'll have four minutes to make any comment this evening. So if anyone would like to make a general public comment, feel free to come up to the podium here. Please put down your name and your address.
Carrie, there's no signet sheet.
Hold up, we'll get one.
Another two second delay.
You're a little delayed.
That's because it's got to go up to a satellite and back down into the wind. What a spooky world we live in, honestly.
My name is Linga Gibson, and I'm a fourth generation Livingston native. And I love what's happening to Livingston. I just read this week about the reservoir park going to be developed. That's wonderful. That's Hoppa Mountain. And the other mountain, we call it, well, Northside Hill, but the other mountain is Airport Hill, because that's where our first airport was. Anyway, I'm here this morning, this afternoon. Because I've noticed down at the Sacagawea Park Swimming Pool Boulevard, there's two signs there. And one of them says, one, "Welcome to Sacagawea Park," and the other one says, "Sacagawea Park Lagoon." Originally Livingston, our original townsite was from H Street to 7th. And then we started developing out. Livingston originally had six islands along the river. The furthest one is Lurkind Island. If you go to 12th Street and you keep going, it says, "Private property, no trespassing." Jackie Denbore owns that. That was Lurkind Island. And across the street from TJ's on B and Park is the Lurkind Building. And that was Livingston used to have the Pepsi bottling plant until we went to Cairns. And across the street where the liquor store is and everything, that was the Coca-Cola Bottling Company. But anyway, Lurkind Island was owned by the Lurkind family. So then you get on River Drive and you start coming till you come to Knight Street. And then you cross the bridge, and there's two islands there. The first is Urbeck Island, and they started the Island Resort Motel. And if you take the first right, Carter Bane owns his parents' house. That was the Island Resort Motel. And then they have a line of cabins. Then if you keep going further down the Knight Street Island Road, then where, where, while the interstate came in in '62, there's an elbow in the river, and it goes like this. It used to go through, and that was Seabec Island, two separate islands. Then you come back across the bridge and you keep going, not even a block, well, yeah, two blocks, from Knight Street to 7th, and that is Swindlehurst Island. There's three Swindlehurst great grandchildren here. Joe Swindlehurst Jr. has his attorney shop at the end of Second. And then Bev Sandberg and her sister Harris, they're they're the three remaining Swindlehurst members. And then you keep going, and then it's McLeod Island. If you go to the Billings Airport, there's a big bronze statue of a man on a horse, and he's wielding a sword. That's General McLeod. And he came out with, I think he came out with Custer and A.W. Miles, not A.W. Miles, Nelson Miles, from the east when we started conquering the Indians and putting them on reservations and stuff. And then if you keep going, the very end of Livingston is Crony Island. And you know, you can see, when you go past the coffee shop, the land goes down. That's where the river came through. We had six islands originally. Anyway, I've mentioned this and brought it to the attention. I've been a volunteer painter for the city of Livingston Park and Rec and City Department for six years. And I brought it to the attention of Eric Schneider, who was the first man I painted under with the Park and Rec Department. I said, "That sign is wrong. Sacagawea Park is across the lagoon." And and he says, "Oh, okay. Well, then, I know there, everybody's super busy. Everyone has a lot on their plate." I let it go, let it go for a couple of years. And then Dan Baker took his place, and then Dan Bush took his place. And now Mike runs it now. But I've mentioned it four different times to the Park and Rec Director that those signs are wrong. And I'd like to see him get corrected before we do one more park or develop it at all. Because when I was growing up, I grew up at the end, I grew up on South 6th. We would go down to the end of 6th. And starting at the 7th Street headgate, where the Yellowstone River, there's a headgate there. All the way around Sacagawea Park to the Yellowstone Street Stone Bridge is the Sacagawea Park Lagoon. Then when you cross over that big pond, the river used to come through there. And now we have a triangle that's a Veterans Park. The river used to come through there. That was my mother's swimming pool. And that is the Miles Park Lagoon. And my only concern here tonight is that we get those, that signage corrected. And when I first met Grant, Melissa took me into his office, and we visited, and I gave him the paperwork to prove that it wasn't just hearsay. And tonight I've brought maps, again, showing that it's not just hearsay, it's really true. And so before we do any more development with city parks, I'd really, really appreciate having that. I'd really appreciate having the signage changed so that people understand which park is which, because I think each individual park, and they're named after, you know, specific people in Livingston, like the A.W. Miles Ranches, just before you built the Bozenham Hill on the left, those barn red houses. And he was one of our founding fathers. So that's all I ask. And as a native, fourth generation, I put my name and phone number on there. So if anyone wants a tour of Livingston and the history that you won't find in a book, I'll gladly give people a ride, and we can get a good cup of coffee. And I'll tell you all this stuff to find in a book. And then I didn't know the Human Journal guy would be here. I gave you each a copy of the journal, because I have a good article in there on the on the the city of Livingston's history. And was that under four minutes?
You're done. Yeah, thank you, Lindy. Thank you for all the information.
The human race.
All right. Any, you're welcome. Anyone else, general public comment? In the room? Okay, we got someone at the back. Tricia?
This I'm just going to give to you. This is a meeting notice of the Transportation Committee of the Legislature regarding hydrogen engines. And I will be emailing the commissioners and Grant and the city manager. And I've been in conversation about getting our shops back to work and creating rail passengers and small rail passenger trains with hydrogen engines. So the money's there. It's part of the infrastructure, by this infrastructure, but you'll get. This is a pretty exciting development. So I will give that to you. My public comment tonight is, this is the point at which my patience ran out. We have had so many studies. This was a $50,000 study we had at Sacagawea Park about the time Mike Cardos began his tenure. And this was a very serious study about how we had to take down the civic center. And so I want to turn this over to you, because we've already got one $50,000 study that was wrong. If you look at our studies, we had $2.4 million, so a study of the underpass. We had this $50,000 study of the Sacagawea Park. We had $45,000 traffic study out of printing for less to justify the underpass out there. We had a $45,000 one-way street study, which also included bobouts. So that comes to $2,540,000 worth of studies that have gone absolutely nowhere. And right now, I feel that this study that we are doing on Sacagawea Park is actually, to me, not only, not only you worthless, because I went to a meeting on Sacagawea Park in which they were getting public input. And I point blank asked the city Public Works Department head, "Will we be trading off part of Miles Park?" And he said, "Absolutely not." And the next day, I had a meeting with the superintendent of schools, and he said, "Yes, we've been talking with the city about trading off part of Miles Park." In sequence, I asked the city attorney for 20 years, Bob Jovic, "Can we do that?" And he said, "Absolutely not. But you cannot, you cannot trade off any of Miles Park, because you look at the original document, and it says, 'This will become a tourist park.' And if it doesn't, the consequence is that the Miles family gets it back. There's nothing else." And when the city gave Miles Park to the school district in the 60s, and they gave it back to the city, they broke the law. So I am saying, and then I heard a rumor that they might take a look at that triangle, Veterans Triangle, and might move around the Veterans Monument. And I have to tell you that the heart and soul of these people was broken when they decided where that monument was going to go. And it means everything, everything at that park means everything to everybody in this town. And so we have a study. We've already done the study. It was incorrect. And usually, studies mean that the city manager or somebody wants to do something that we don't want. So my, my suggestion is that we at last paint the civic center. We fix it up. We possibly put solar panels on it. We, we do the only thing, which is the skate park was moved, and we, we, we fix that. And, and take it no further. That's enough. $2,540,000 worth of studies. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else in the room? We'll go online. Oh, hold on, folks, on there, we have one person in the room.
I heard a paper walk.
That's one, Jeff. The paper must have walked.
Oh, Patricia, did you have it? Patricia didn't grab it. There we go.
Leslie Feigl, Livingstonary Chamber of Commerce. I, just a quick question here for the commissioners or for Mr. Gager. The, I was at the American Legion last week, and some of you might have remembered that there was quite a large, two different commission meetings in regards to the flag down in the park. The flagpole that needed to be replaced and the flag, there was $20,000 that was set aside for that at the time. And since the previous city manager is no longer with us, what might have happened to the $20,000 that was supposed to be set aside to put the flag up? I have talked with quite a few of them, where we're trying to figure out how to kind of either write something to present to you, to ask, or maybe something that you could look into to let me know, so that I can let them know that this is something that is continuing to be worked on, and we will eventually have the flag back down there. Would be awesome. Thank you so much. Thanks, Leslie.
Anyone else in the room? Online, anyone online like to make general public comment? Ask one more time. Feel free to come off mute. Say your name. General public comment online. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close general public comment. All right, let's continue on. Our consent items, commissioners, consent items A through E. Anyone like anything pulled this evening?
Yeah, I'm getting anything to reload. That was supposed to work, and now it's not.
I'll make a motion to, or I don't want to make a motion. I want to pull C and D, please.
C and D?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Vice Chair Newt. So Vice Chair Newt has asked to have C and D pulled. Any other consent items need to be pulled? All right, I would entertain a motion for the others.
I'll make a motion to approve A, B, and E.
I have a motion by Newt, so I have a second. Second by Willich. All in favor of approving A, B, and E, say aye. Motion carries. Vice Chair Newt, so let's start with C.
It's the same for both. It's just a tiny, a tiny comment. Both of them, I think, have a typo where it says Myers Park instead of Miles Park. So I just want to, I believe Mr. Great Gager likes to call that a Scribner's error. I believe is the language you, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So I, but I just wanted to make a note, since we have like Myers River Trail, that it's actually Miles Park, I believe, that staff is talking about.
And that's in a staff report?
Yeah, it's, it's for both of them, under the introduction and history for C, and also under introduction and history for D.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
I don't, I don't think we have to make a motion to amend or anything, right, for that?
No, that's correct.
Okay, but that's all that I had on those. No issues with them. Just wanted to clarify the location.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else?
No.
All right. I have a motion then to approve C and D.
I'll make a motion to approve C and D.
Second.
I have a motion by Newt and a second by Schwartz. All in favor, say aye. 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 Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have no pro forma motions this evening.
Wow.
Get a break for once.
We have no scheduled public comment. So we'll go to action items. So we'll start with action item A. Resolution number 5144, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, levying 100% of the cost of street maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year 2024, 2025 in the amount of $1,390,903, and assessing all property within the district. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Cale. The item for you is the finalization of the street maintenance levy for fiscal 2025, as you noted. And as discussed in the staff report, the city expects the average residential property assessment to be approximately $268.36, and the average commercial assessment to be approximately $646.95. And as also shown in the attachments to the staff report, there is a slight increase of 2.43% for households at all values. And so a household that is valued at $300,000 may expect to pay an additional $4.68 in fiscal year 25 relative to fiscal 24. And Director Federhoff and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? And I'll just remind the public, this is a second reading as well. We've voted on this once already. Any questions?
Aye.
Okay. Hearing, no questions. Entertained a motion, so we could open it to public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 5144.
A motion by Schwartz, so I have a second.
Second.
A second by Lyons. Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. We'll start with folks in the room. Feel free to come up to the front and give us your name and address. Anyone in the room? All right, now seeing, oh, Tricia, you're coming up.
Okay.
Tricia Gravo, 204 East Calendar Street, Livingston. I own a large commercial building downtown. I pay taxes other people don't pay. I pay the LVID. I pay TBIT. I pay, I paid $50,000 for just my half, the sidewalk, when they put the sidewalk in in front of my business. Now, I'm just one of the building owners. But we all face all of these additional taxes that nobody has. And now you want to raise the, the taxes that the commercial buildings are making. You don't want us to succeed. You don't want us to stay solvent. This city commission has never once said, ever, in their strategic plan, the economic health of Livingston was anything that we would consider. You've turned it down and turned it down, saying, "Economic and health of the people of Livingston is not important to us." And you've never put it in your strategic plan. And now you want to raise our taxes for our commercial buildings, when we have barely, where Neptune's and all the other commercial buildings downtown are barely getting over paying $50,000, and $30,000, and $40,000 for their streets and nine one one. What a reason, our commercial taxes. Exactly where do you think we get our income from? You, you want us to put affordable housing, and you want to tell us what to do to make a living for our families. I just, I can't believe that you would do this now, now that we've, we've come out with a Main Street project, and suddenly you're doing this to us. I just, I've just, I'm just chagrined.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else in the room? No one else in the room? Let's go ahead and go online. Anyone online like to make public comment? Feel free to come off mute and give us your name. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners? Deliberation?
I'm just going to make one comment clarifying. All sidewalks are the responsibility of the owner of the building adjacent to them. And the fact that you only have to pay half for, you know, their improvements on it's a pretty good deal. The rest of the taxpayers in the city had to pick up the balance of that. So I just want to, you know, bring that to everybody's attention. Are you?
Thank you.
Other than that, I have no other comments.
Anyone else, commissioners?
I think about, I think about these raises, and they impact all of us, even commissioners who definitely are not getting rich by volunteering their time with the city. And I think about other Montana communities where I've lived that didn't have the population base that were hit even harder with industry changes than Livingston was. And Livingston, I acknowledge, was hit hard. And just how greatly that impacted the community for generations when maintenance was deferred on shared infrastructure. So while I don't love paying more just as much as the next person, I do think it's important to maintain what we have, so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have to replace everything all at once, because we've deferred for generations or for decades. So that's sort of like my reasoning why I support small increases, so we don't have to pay a huge cost to do major upgrades all around town at the same time.
Thank you. My sureness. And I would agree with you, because if we're not working on it now, some other generation or just a little bit further down the road, there's going to be a bigger bill, and it's going to be more difficult than to pay it all at one time than to have some increases over time. And unfortunately, the cost of everything is going up, and we're all feeling it. All right, anything else, commissioners?
There, it says reconnecting. There are people that are on Zoom, but it's dropped them.
Thank you.
It is.
Okay. Looks, from my end, it looks like we're back. Everything's up. Commissioners, ready for roll call?
All right.
Yeah. Mr. Gager, roll call, please.
Chair Cale.
For.
Vice Chair Newt.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Commissioner Willich.
For. Motion carries. All right, action item B, resolution number 5145, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, estimating the cost of maintaining lights and supplying electric current to Special Improvement Lighting District Number 20 in the amount of $61,993 for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and levying and assessing 61% of the estimated cost against every parcel of property within said district for the part of the cost, which is taxable value bears to the taxable value of the district. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Cale. The item before you is the second of two readings on the resolution setting the light maintenance assessment. And this is the first of two resolutions before you this evening regarding the streetlight district. This one is for the electricity supply. And as noted in the staff report, the two lighting assessment districts, taken in total, will result in a decrease for users. And so a property owner with a $300,000 parcel might expect to pay approximately 36 cents less in fiscal 25 than they did in fiscal 24, combined impact for, for both of the lighting districts. And so I will stand for any questions you may have. And I'm joined by Director Federhoff and Mr..
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Nothing clarifying.
Okay. All right, no clarifying questions. I would entertain a motion then.
I'll move to approve resolution number 5145.
I have a motion by Willich, so I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Schwartz. Okay, so we will go ahead and open this up to public comment. We'll start in the room. Anyone that would like to make comment, please come up to the front. Give us your name and address, please.
Leslie Feigl, Livingstonary Chamber of Commerce. Again, another quick one here. It says against parcels. It doesn't say how many parcels on number on B would probably pertain to A, B, and C. But there's nothing in the actual package either that explained like how many parcels this is going to be levied against in this particular districts. Are they all the entire district of the city limits or just in specific districts?
In this particular districts, are they all the entire district of the city limits or just in specific districts?
If there were public comments, so direct to me, and when we finish public comment, we can answer.
So, um, number two would be also, I want to mention that, um. This would be a good time to bring this up as well because uh last week or the two weeks ago, when this was first reading. Um, there was um a fake social media account that's um. Said a bunch of horrible things about the Chamber of Commerce and myself. And um one of your commissioners put a big heart on it. He was the first one to put a heart on it. And um that happened immediately when this meeting was done and this was on these three topics. And I think it's sad that I can't get up here just to ask specific questions without being land blasted, but. Um, I hope that you listen to my questions and I can find a way to get an answer on. How many things in the parcels?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Public comment online. Would anyone online like to make public comment? Feel free to come off mute and say your name. One more time, public comments. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Mr. Gager, can you answer the question about the number of parcels? And perhaps just the district.
Absolutely, uh, just for clarification, the street maintenance and two electric, excuse me, street lighting districts are all citywide.
All citywide.
So those are three citywide.
So all parcels in the city. Thank you. Deliberation?
Can I just ask a follow up?
Please.
Um, I believe. Leslie was interested if we knew the number of parcels. I know we don't always have that level of specific spec- specificity. That's weird word to say, specificity, but I don't know if um. Anybody on staff has it off the top of their head or not.
You you know, I am uh happy to, I I will confess, I do not know the number of parcels off the top of my head, but we've got a planning director who. Might potentially know the number of parcels. I will, I will report back to on the total. Finance director.
Four thousand get assessed, but that is very rough. Don't remember specifically.
I'll just repeat it in case people on Owl can't hear that roughly four thousand. It's an estimate, roughly four thousand parcels, thank you.
And Mr. Gager, um, the planning director said they might be able to dig deeper and get us that later on.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting question also.
Although there could be more parcels, just not assessed under this as well, might be undeveloped for. Parcels and stuff, so.
Uh, no, this is assessed on all parcels. We've modified. Brought the undeveloped parcels in line with the developed parcels about a year and a half.
Okay. That's right, I forgot about that.
Yeah, just to make sure we're clear on that too, thank you.
Clarifying.
That's easy, that's one to get mixed up.
Right. This question deliberation?
Yeah, all comment. Um, I appreciate that staff is lowering the fees because they can, based on the way our city has changed, because I. I realized that maybe not all staff at all cities would take the opportunity to lower the cost to residents if they could, so thank you. For bringing us something where we can actually lower the cost and still have our needs met as a community, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moots. Anything else, commissioners? Roll call please.
Chair Kale.
Or.
Vice Chair Noots.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Commissioner Willage.
Sorry, motion carries, jumped ahead, I apologize. Okay, uh, action item C. Resolution number fifty one forty six, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Modifying special improvement lighting district number twenty by replacing streetlights and other upflances. They're in to levy and assess fifty eight percent of the estimated cost of thirty eight, excuse. Of thirty eight thousand dollars for fiscal year. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five against every parcel of property within said district for that part of the cost, which is taxable value bears. To the taxable value of the district. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is the second half of the street light operation, and this one, as you noted. Covers our streetlights and other appurtenances within the district, which is citywide. And as noted on the last item, the total impact on a property valued at three hundred thousand would be a decrease of thirty six cents. From approximately fourteen dollars and fifty five cents last fiscal year to approximately fourteen dollars and twenty cents this fiscal year. And so Director Federhoff and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'm going to bring our attention to the actual resolution on page eighty seven. In the fourth paragraph, and I I'm reading fiscal year. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Could it be twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five?
So it, either we would change that to be fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, or property tax year twenty three, twenty four, I believe would be it.
It should be fiscal year twenty four.
Okay, so we just need to make that change. Thank you. Commissioners, any clarifying questions?
I have a little question about, uh, it's actually about. One forty five and forty six. Are the rate decreases aggregate for seventy two cents total for three hundred thousand or is it thirty six cents for?
It is thirty six. That is the combined impact of both of the districts and um they are apportioned rela- uh approximately two thirds to one third. And so if if one were looking to break that down approximately, uh, what sixteen or so cents of this. Um, of the thirty six cent decrease would be as a result of the appurtenances. And the other portion would be for the current.
Any other clarifying question?
Here.
All right. Hearing none, uh, I'd entertain a motion.
Go, go, fine. Okay. Let me get the motion approved, resolution five one four six.
Motion by Schwartz, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I can find Willage, okay. So let's go ahead and open it back up to public comment. We'll start with folks in the room. Uh, if you have a public comment, please feel free to come up to the front.
Patricia Gravo, two oh four East Calendar Street. I have a question and you can ask at the end of this. We have several large buildings downtown. That are. Not actually owned by H R D C, the Miles Building and the Sherwood Building. But they. Somehow worked it out so that the owner doesn't pay taxes. Do, and it seems to me like we are. Are we covering even lighting? For these buildings? That are not on the tax rolls, the existing downtown building owners. Are we? Basically picking up the tab for them? Because. They're large buildings and they don't take pay taxes. That was my question to you. Um, and I I do want to say. That um T bid pays the other half of our. Um, of our streets. And we also paid as downtown building owners, we also paid. Part of the street work as well, so it it would be just so nice if that were a thank you. Um, other than. That 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 we have carried so much, we have a hundred and sixty building owners who are struggling to survive. And and. And there is, there is just no gratitude. For the effort that we're putting out. For our community, but it's, it's legion. So I, I just wanted, and I wanted to find out if we were carrying these other. Nonprofit kind of buildings in downtown Livingston.
Thank you, Patricia.
And I will make a copy of this. Secretary of Parks study.
Okay, thanks, Patricia. Uh, anyone else in the room? Anyone online? Would anyone online like to make public comment? Feel free to come off mute, say your name. I'll ask one more time, anyone online? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Mr. Gager, could you answer the question about? The the Miles and the Sherwood, or I suppose in the other buildings.
Yeah, I I guess I'd take the opportunity to speak generally and say that special improvement district assessments are levied upon. Properties regardless of their um taxable status, and so. Um, various nonprofits and and other organizations that don't otherwise pay taxes to pay. They, excuse me, Director Federhoff, would you like to offer your clarification?
Yes, sorry, no. Uh, because the assessments are based on taxable value and there is no taxable value for nonprofits in um state law. Those properties also do not pay street and light assessments.
Okay, they do not, they do not, thank you. And that's via state law, that's what I'm, because there's no taxable value.
It, part of it is because there's no taxable value and that's how we calculate our assessment. If we used a different methodology for those assessments, then we could potentially. Uh, pass some of that cost on to those exempt properties.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners deliberation, thoughts?
Did you ask for online public comment?
I, yes.
I could, I could.
I'm sorry.
That's just me.
I did, correct, Mr. Gager? Yeah, okay, just to double check, thank you, but thank you for. Do you know?
You're supposed to say pay attention.
Uh, deliberation thoughts? Commissioners?
Not here.
Same comment as I made last time, I would just. Reiterate, reiterate that sentiment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, I think we can do roll call, roll call, Mr. Gager, please.
Chair Kale.
Or.
Vice Chair Noots.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Commissioner Willage.
Or.
Motion carries. Okay. Now, we are moving on to the downtown master plan, so presentation and consideration of the downtown master plan. And right before I hand it over to you, Commissioners, we're at six sixteen, I feel like this is going to go for a little while. Does anyone need a break before we get started, or we could do a? The presentation and then take a break. I'm just, I feel like this might take a little bit, so I thought I'd. Prepare us.
Well, man, never passing up a chance, get a break.
Okay, so why don't we do that to to get that sorted? So would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion, take whatever you said.
Ten minute break.
Take a ten minute break, okay, so I have a motion by Schwartz, um, do you have a second?
All second and supportive.
Say aye. Okay, so we'll take a break for ten minutes, we'll be back at six twenty seven P M. Okay, I'm going to welcome everybody back and call the meeting back to order. Um, at six twenty five P M. Uh, and I will remind folks to please at the, at the front here, please speak up. Folks are having a hard time hearing us in the back, so we will try to project better, so thank you for that comment. Um, and then before we move on, I will follow up with an update. From before where there was a ask about parcels in the city. And we got the exact number of parcels in the city is four thousand one hundred and fifty three. Um, so that you'll have that information as well. All right, so we will move on to action item D, which is presentation and consideration of the downtown master plan. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. Uh, the item before you is a presentation from our planning. Department and consultant team of the downtown master plan, and this is an effort that. Uh, kicked off, you might recall, we had a uh special commission meeting actually last July. Uh, the week of July fourth to award this contract, I believe it was on July seventh, if not the state. And so, uh, here we are almost fourteen months later after uh many, many meetings and. Uh, and probably literally hundreds, if not thousands of comments received uh by the planning staff and team. And so, uh, I'm I'm pleased to uh invite our planning director, Jack Seabird, sit up along with Andy Rets from Crescendo. Who will give you a uh a high level view uh of of the draft downtown master plan. And um this has been previously shared, not only with the Consolidated Land Use Board. Um, but also with the Urban Renewal Agency as well and and their board. And so, um, there, there really is a a lot in the document. Uh, but I I really want to stress and kind of remind everybody that this is not uh a regulatory document, and so it's. Uh, it contains recommendations um for um some potential improvements in the publicly owned space. But it also includes some visioning um and conceptual aspirational work on privately owned spaces. Uh, you know, moving forward, um, clearly the city's role is in the public space. Um, and and we do hope that this provides some inspiration for those private property owners who may wish to. Um, do some redevelopment or development of their property, uh, but do it in a way that's um. That that matches the the community's interest and the community's desire. Um, that said, as I mentioned, it is not a regulatory document, and so um those recommendations are are not prescriptive to private property owners. And so, uh, I guess with that, I would turn it over to the planning team.
Good evening, commissioners, um. I do not have slides because the star of the show this evening is um Andy Rutz from Crescendo. Uh, the downtown master planning team. Um, I just wanted to do another little bit of quick introduction, um. As Mr. Gager said, this has been going on, this process for uh almost fourteen months from when we did the kickoff. Um, Andy will go over the different um. Touchpoints, what we call them, uh, times community outreach, um, when we did charrettes or workshops or even farmers markets. Um, that was also an attachment in your staff report. Just real quick, I kind of wanted to go over, um, we have had um beyond the fourteen months. Um, for the public review of the draft that um. Was first brought before the land use board and then slightly revised and now is brought before you. We actually released that um for public review on July seventeenth. Um, initially, we gave a comment period through August seventh, that was in order to allow the consulting team and staff to. Review comments that we received and um incorporate them where necessary. Before the August fourteenth land use board meeting, so that was about three weeks for that initial uh public review period. Um, at the same time, on July seventeenth, uh. Andy also sent an email blast to about two hundred and fifty, give or take, people that had signed up to be on the downtown master plan. Um, notification list. Um, also, I posted a large love my seventeen flyer in the front of City Hall and one of those um. Cabinets with a Q R code that told people the public review draft is out. Um, they could scan it and it would be taken immediately to the page where you could review the draft and there were options uh for. To pull down to provide comments in specific areas. Then on August fourth, uh, the city manager newsletter went out, it reaches about, I think I said in your um staff report, it was about fifteen hundred. I need to correct that, I think it's about thirteen hundred and some change. Um, different people by email, um, so that notification went out, that's ten days before the the land use board meeting. Also, I believe Greg Anthony, our policy analyst, uh, posted on City's Facebook page. Uh, one, maybe two times about that this draft was up for review. Um, beyond that. Um, we continued to receive comments through the land use board meeting, even after um we've collected all of that. We provided the last few that we got between when this was posted on August twenty seventh, which was last Tuesday, also a little bit earlier than we would normally. Then the rest of your packet was posted, we got three more comments through noon today, so I didn't also get any more after that. Um, so you have every, all the comments that we've gotten. Um, and so from the time we first posted this till today at noon, that's about seven weeks that we have had this out there for the community. To review. to review uh, and provide comments on. Um, I also just wanted to say, I, I know I listed them in your staff report, but um, as you know, um, one of the things um, we, we strive to do with, with things we bring you are um to support the growth policy and to align with the growth policy or various documents. The downtown master plan, um, the, the process to uh to do one, to, to go through the planning process and then to adopt one um, actually hits on nineteen objectives and strategies in the growth policy, so that's quite a lot. That it's um, either fully kind of fulfills and supports, or at least touches on it in some way. Um, and then, again, Andy's gonna kind of walk you through um, the different parts of the plan, a little bit about the process, the different areas, some of the recommendations for implementation. But um, just the final thing that we're looking for from you is an um an action, um, and we are recommending that you um, approve the Consolidated Land Use Board's recommendation to adopt this downtown master plan as it's proposed to you. So, it's Andy, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
And Andy, before you get started, I'm just gonna let folks know too, because Andy's facing this way and talking to us. If you are having issues hearing, please, we've lost the seats up front too, so thank you for coming. Come a little closer if you'd like, don't, don't be afraid, okay, thank you, Andy.
Thanks, yeah, no problem, and I'll try to, I'll try to project, see, maybe I can bounce it off the wall. Yeah, well, thank you, I, I'm Andy Rutz, I'm with Crescendo Planning and Design. Um, and maybe while Grant pulls up the, the presentation, um, I'll just start by saying, you know, thank you from the bottom of my heart and our team's heart um, for letting us work with you all in the community on this process. We've, we've had the good fortune to do a number of these in different communities, and Livingston is absolutely like one of the most engaged communities I've ever had the chance to work in, uh, which is truly a compliment. And, and it's, it keeps you energized as someone who's like helping a community like through this process, so um, so first of all, yes, thank you to everybody. As Jen said, what um, what I'm gonna try and do today is quickly recap the planning process and sort of the public engagement approach that we took. It might not be shared yet, is that true?
Yeah, it, it just seems like there's potentially a little bit of a lag there.
Now, it went, now it's gone. Give us one moment, Andy.
No problem.
This is a good time for him to repeat that Livingston is his favorite, I think.
Yeah, it's.
Just say that louder.
Yeah.
Livingston is the number one town.
It, it's, it is a jewel, truly, you, you all know that, though.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, great. Um, so just in terms of what I'm gonna take the time to go through, a recap of our process and the sort of approach to public engagement that we took um, through the process. A reminder, although Grant said it really well here at the start, kind of what the intent of a downtown master plan is, and then what the scope of the document itself entails and how that hopefully aligns with the intent. And then we wanted to go through a set of kind of planned highlights, as Grant mentioned, there's a lot of a lot of content in there, um, and so we wanted to find a way to just kind of hit on some of the big ideas so that those who maybe not have, have maybe not taken the chance to read the entire document yet, kind of get a sense of some of the kind of key themes. And tap in the screen, and it might let me.
You know, if you just give me a second, I might just go a different route of this.
Okay. I can mention too, um, so I, I was joined in this effort by Economic and Planning Systems, who's a land use economics firm, um, they focus largely on the economic development and housing study components of the plan, and then Robert Petchian Associates, who are a transportation planning um, and engineering firm um, here in Montana, really helped out on the kind of streetscape and mobility side of things as well as parking study. Okay, perfect, it's working. Um, so as, as Jen mentioned, you know, kind of first and foremost, this effort was teed up by the growth policy and the specific strategy um, that this aims to complete is strategy six one five three, the exploring the creation of a downtown master plan. And I guess the important nuance in that is aligning the boundary of the study area with the urban renewal district. And that was done strategically to allow the urban renewal agency, um, should they be interested to really help kind of catalyze the implementation of the community's vision and be able to invest um, directly into the, the study area boundary for this downtown master plan. Um, I think as both Jen and Grant mentioned, uh, it's been about a thirteen, fourteen month process. As Grant said, we, we kicked things off officially right after the Fourth of July, um, I think we met with city commission um, in that August fifteenth to seventeenth window, just by way of sort of introducing the project. And then we had organized the kind of major outreach windows um during those kind of two to three day blitzes uh, in August, November, and February, um, and that takes us to, as Jen said, the public review draft being out in the middle of July. Land use board was August fourteenth, and then we're here tonight. Um, in terms of the kind of touch points that we created for the community, I think best practice is to try and vary those as much as possible, folks have increasingly busy schedules, decreasing amounts of disposable time, and so we wanted to allow people to engage as much or as little uh, as they're interested in. So a lot of kind of community wide events to just piggyback on places that folks already may be. Um, a lot of really one-on-one opportunities by way of phone calls and Zoom meetings at the start of the process to try and tease out kind of a collective vision, um, and then Jen had mentioned, we were fortunate that a lot of folks volunteered their contact information to be part of a email distribution list that we could kind of send out blasts with. We paired that early on with a number of surveys, um, trying to be cognizant of the fact that some folks may not be able to show up in person to certain events, but may want to engage a little more passively at home. Had a really great turnout on that preliminary visioning survey, uh, both folks in town as well as in the county. As we went through the process, and this is typical, I would say, of a downtown master plan, which as Grant said, is, is a visioning document, you kind of start at the, the wishlist level and then ask folks to kind of like filter and filter down as we add feasibility into the equation. And so, um, an emerging ideas survey that we had in that November timeframe, um, had pretty good participation throughout the process, had done a bunch of uh, walking tours with stakeholder members and staff to test things on the ground. I mentioned um, the sort of concentrated blitz of events in mid-November of last year. So we had um, great turns outs at a, like more hands-on workshop charrette, um, an early morning business owner breakfast, and then a more sort of informal passive opportunity engage at a, just kind of drop in open house. Uh, towards the end of February, we convened a series of focus group meetings and asked folks to really roll up their sleeves and kind of dig into the planned framework and some of those emerging recommendations, um, we organized those by like topic-specific sessions, so some folks focused on economic development, some focused on housing, some focused on um, streetscape and mobility improvements. Everything was on the table, you could talk about anything you wanted to, but um, it was folks who had kind of expertise or specific interest in each of those. And one of those was also with a number of high school students, uh, which is a great perspective to have in an effort like this, knowing that they are gonna be the stewards of the downtown a generational way. As I mentioned, have done a handful of um, presentations at public meetings um, in front of city commission. At the time, it was planning and zoning um, board, and it was a consolidated meeting. And then um, a few sessions with the U R A board, keeping in mind that opportunity for them um, to help potentially invest in some of the improvements. And one of the ideas we got from the community uh, early on in the process, which yielded a great return was could we build an interface on the webpage that you could hop on any time of day, any day of the week, when an idea popped into your mind? And you could um, enter it and categorize it, and we had over two hundred ideas, over a hundred and forty individual kind of entries into that. I'll go through these quickly, because Jen sort of recapped this, um, but the public review draft we released on the seventeenth, um, and we used an opportunity to meet with the U R A on the twenty third of July as another way to kind of publicize, hey, this draft is out. Go and try and sink your teeth into it. I would say uh, kudos to the, the city on this one, selfishly, as a consultant team, we really like to show responsiveness to the comments, and sometimes we're asked in a prompt process like this to release a draft and then not touch it until we're before you, um, and we were granted the opportunity to make changes to the public review draft once we took it to the land use board, um, so all the public comments we received through July thirty first, we were able to show some responsiveness to uh, and present that in the draft that went to the land use board. And all of those comments are in your packet, everything from July seventeenth um, until we, we put the packet together um, and sent it to you on the twenty seventh are in your packet. Um, and then as, as Jen mentioned, I think, um, and I, as I was just saying, at the land use board meeting, we were able to present the changes we had made since that public review draft. We had some great public comment from folks and received that recommendation of approval, subject to the sort of seven specific revisions that we and staff had suggested to show responsiveness to public comment. And that was things that had come after July thirty first. Um, and then we were able to post the, the draft that's in your packet um, on Tuesday the twenty seventh, along with the staff report, um, and then sent another email out to folks to, to kind of get the word out again. So in terms of uh, scope and intent, the intent of a downtown master plan itself is really just to articulate what is the residents' vision of downtown Livingston, and really for a horizon that's about twenty years. Um, we, we could try to project out further than that, but as like technology changes, as markets change, um, it's it has diminishing returns the, the longer you go out, and so twenty years is a pretty conventional um, sort of timeframe for an effort like this. And I think a really exciting thing about Livingston is that there's already a lot of momentum, and so um, we were able to piggyback on a lot of efforts that were already underway, take some of the previous planning documents and like focus them in the downtown through this effort, rather than trying to start from scratch and reinvent everything. In terms of how we do that in the document itself, then um, it's sort of organized by these three chapters. First, really trying to reflect the vision as succinctly as we can of, here's what we heard from the community over this year-plus process. In the second chapter, then, how do we give the city a framework that helps guide efforts, but as Grant said, it, it doesn't change anyone's entitlement or legal rights, it's not a regulatory document, but it's rather a a guide to say if you can sort of put initiatives in place, um, following these recommendations, chances are you're gonna hit on the community's vision pretty strongly. And then in chapter three, um, in the implementation action plan, we're trying to identify specific steps, both in kind of short, medium, long term, in order to kind of drive work program for the city and say, these are these are investments essentially that could be catalytic in really making that vision a reality. So as I mentioned, uh, organizing the three chapters, and then there's an appendix at the end, uh, the first piece of which is really just a catalog of the raw inputs of community engagement that we got. I think that's a really valuable resource for the city in that twenty-year horizon, because if, if something is devoid of nuance, you can kind of pour back through that and try and get a better understanding of maybe what the conversation was at that time. And then two standalone, um, more technical documents, uh, housing study and a parking study. Those, while I say they, they're standalone, um, they're more analysis documents. However, all of the, the takeaways from those are things that drove recommendations in the plan, so again, really helpful context in the appendix. Going through the kind of chapter-by-chapter organization, um, as I mentioned, that first chapter is really trying to lay out vision themes. So really kind of high level, should stand the test of time, should live the kind of twenty-year life cycle of the plan. Moving into chapter two, um, we call it a master plan framework diagram, but effectively what it is, is how do we take all of the recommendation ideas and catalytic project ideas and map them in a, in a single diagram, so you can see how they can start to hang together. And I think when done well, there's opportunities for the city to invest in one thing and sort of reap the benefits two or threefold um, by, by kind of being strategic and clustering some of those implementation items. I'll use this map um, in a little bit here in the presentation, just as a means to sort of walk through some of those big ideas. Um, but it's really in, it's really intended to show physically how these projects and recommendations can move towards the, the kind of bigger picture vision themes in the first chapter. And then throughout that, um, is a lot of narrative, hopefully supported by a, a bunch of like enticing photos. Um, but it's, it's intended to give the city and you all really flexible guidance on how you can implement the community's vision over time. Um, and so, I think what you probably saw in a lot of the public comment, and this is typical of any process like this, was a lot of nuance and a lot of detail, and sometimes a lot of specificity on like, here's exactly how we should implement this idea. It's great fodder to have that for the city to reflect on moving forward. We try to resist the temptation to get too specific in the kind of policy recommendations like this, because we don't want to risk the plan becoming outdated unintentionally in a, in a shorter timeframe, um, again, should markets or technologies or things change. Um, but what you find in this is a, is that mix of short-term incremental steps, and then there are some like really big picture kind of bold um, policies and, and initiatives that the city could chase. Yeah, you can just tap it if you. Perfect, um, and then chapter three, uh, the implementation action plan. I'd say that the big kind of caveat to this section is that a lot of these ideas are admittedly more resource dependent, and by resource dependent, sometimes that means a lot of time and another process, so like specifically on the regulatory tools side of things, it would be another more detailed conversation uh, to move something into regulation, or sometimes it's a big expense by the city in terms of an infrastructure investment, sometimes it's both. Um, but we tried to come up with a mix of short, medium, long term, and I'll try and touch on a couple of those in a minute, um, but the way this chapter is organized is sort of in those categories of how you could move these big ideas forward. And so the first of those is regulatory tools. A lot of those admittedly have to do with the upcoming zoning code update, which is, I'd say the land use board is really well timed by the city to have a visioning effort like this roll right into um, regulation, because you don't have to start the conversation from scratch. Um, a set of recommendations around the community's desires for priority infill and redevelopment sites, so as Grant mentioned, there is guidance that um, shows what the community's desires would be on some private properties, doesn't change private property owners' rights. But if you get somebody who's like looking for a big idea for their site, they've got a running start towards something that might resonate um, well with the community. A housing development section that really tested the feasibility of three um, housing prototypes within the downtown. Um, a handful of streetscape improvements that I'll talk about in a bit. A section on wayfinding and gateways, um, giving guidance both on, on specific locations as well as um destinations within the downtown to help orient folks to, and then a set of strategies for parking management. And all that is kind of summed up at the end of the third chapter in what we're calling an implementation matrix, but it's intended to be a sort of one-stop shop. How do I get to like what the city is responsible for in the short, medium, long term? How do I get a, a high-level sense of the order and magnitude cost of each of these things? And then I think really importantly, a little bit of identification of who are the potential champions in the community. Champions being folks who will help advocate for that, but they may not have a like financial stock in it. And then partners who may be folks who are either investing financially or entities like yourselves who are acting on something um, and approving it. And then lastly, I had mentioned the appendix is the kind of longer form supporting documents um, that really kind of give the basis for the, the recommendations that precede it. Okay, so the fun stuff, uh, plan highlights. So I mentioned, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna use that planned framework diagram as sort of a jumping off point to talk through some of these. And I'll do my best to try to link these to where they show up in the implementation action plan, and then even give you a little bit of a sense of maybe some of the short-term actions that we're hoping the city can move forward to, um, at least to start to explore how to implement the vision. So, um, we'll start with the big red box, land use and activation. So um, we'll start with the big red box, land use and activation. Um, and what you see here, and I don't think I can point with this clicker, but I'll try to describe the area. Um, the light blue north of Lewis shows the kind of historic district boundary. And then there's a red sort of eye shape south of that, um, coming up to the creek and where the the high school is. Um, and so there are recommendations in the plan to explore a maximum building height in those areas and kind of in variable places. The rationale on that is that there is not a maximum building height currently in the downtown. And so um, the plan speaks to, you know, why the community felt it may be important to think about some caps on those areas to help protect views and the character of things. And short term action on that is a a really quick win in that you're doing the zoning code update, um, so that can give you a foundation for that conversation. Similarly, the um highway commercial zoning, which you can see kind of in the dot, polka dotted, black and orange um, is another conversation that would be great to have in this upcoming zoning code update. Um, really taking a close look at the appropriateness of certain zone districts, especially along Parks Park Street, which sort of serves as a front door um into the downtown. A lot of this section also speaks to the pictures that you see on the right of the recommendations around how do we bring more activity and vitality into the downtown? And so sort of the layman's premise of more bodies i- equals kind of more spending potential equals more economic vitality equals opportunities for small businesses to continue to thrive and survive. Um, and then this also touches, even though there is a economic and development, economic development and housing section. Um, this also touches on the priority infill redevelopment sites, um, where we had heard from the community specific desires of certain uses that they would like to see to help kind of catalyze that vision geographically within the downtown. On the streetscapes and mobility side of things, um, I will skip the first two, which is Second Street Promenade and Park Street improvements, because I'll show some images of those. But this was a really good opportunity for us to lean on the trails and active transportation plan, which had already provided a lot of really good guidance citywide. Um, but it allowed us to kind of test the feasibility of that within the downtown study area. And to be honest, I'd say this section is why this framework diagram stretches beyond just our boundary. Is to make sure that we're intentional about saying, you know, when you prioritize a bike connection on Lewis, make sure you get it all the way to park, make sure it cuts through the downtown, it divides it nicely sort of in half. Um, and you'll see other places along Geyser B, Yellowstone Fifth. Um, and the, the plan includes some guidance and admittedly caveats on a couple of those roadways like Geyser and B where those are MDT urban routes. And so it's not just the city's decision to make, but rather another kind of collaborative opportunity. Um, and then in the kind of purple dash circles, um, a number of priority gateway opportunities, and it's not an accident that those tend to align with some of the recommendations for wayfinding and gateways in the implementation action plan. That's another really good short term opportunity to start to populate, even if it's some of the smaller scale um signage that you see on the right. Um, where you can help with wayfinding for maybe users of different modes. The plan speaks a lot too about kind of doubling down on investments. So, you know, when you're doing bike parking or bike corral, take the opportunity to also make it public art if you can. Some of those can be really low cost investments. Um, and they can even be kind of community led volunteer initiatives. Another piece that um is talked about is parklets, and I think we heard some differing opinions on these. There's a lot of communities that have used them to great success. I think the the good thing along that theme of this is a vision document, not a regulatory document. Um, it's not compulsory, so it's just really recommending that the city explores creating a program. So if business owners are interested in that opportunity, they can, you know, explore it at their, their own decision making um to to, to try and support their business operations. And then some of the kind of bigger ticket items, I would say in that streetscapes and mobility suite of recommendations, and these are the kind of catalytic projects that show up in the, the third chapter. The implementation action plan, um, this is a look at just conceptually, um, Second Street Promenade, looking south. The buildings aren't intended to be local buildings, so try to imagine them just as um suggestions. But I can toggle back and forth here. This is the existing configuration. And this second one is, is what we we call psych attract. The nice thing in this, I guess I would call your eye to the curb lines in this drawing. You'll see the curb lines don't change at all. And so really what this amounts to is sort of a reallocation of the space in the right of way, and it can be done at a relatively low cost. Um. In the plan, we recommend that that this type of condition is explored seasonally and then tracked and tested and see how the community responds to it. Uh, because the big idea, w- where one of the big ideas in the plan was to create a promenade, a really dedicated space for users at a slower speed. So imagine folks on strollers, um, maybe folks in wheelchairs. Cyclists are absolutely allowed there as well, but a a facility that parallels the sidewalk. And I'll show you a image of that in a minute. Um, but rather than recommend that the city dives full into an investment of that size. A way to sort of test it and pilot it would be seasonally um to reallocate the space at a lower cost like this. Then um, looking at that sort of longer term, bigger vision investment. Now this is looking north um at Geyser basically. So toggling from existing to envisioned. What I would caveat this with is the rendering is absolutely intended to be representative of the vision. So it's supposed to give you sort of look and feel. There are a lot of details that are rendered accurately in this. So curb lines and the, the dimensions of the promenade are accurate. Um, but the only thing I can promise is if the city were to implement this, it wouldn't look exactly like this. Uh, but the idea is to try to reflect, you know, what we heard from community members as they were kind of dreaming big on this one. And then um, the other one I'll highlight in this streetscape and mobility section is this idea of pedestrian prioritization at park. Um, so the first is Park in Main, the second is Park in Second. Again, a, a bit of a challenge um in that it's an MDT roadway, so the city can't just wave along and do what they want immediately. But a document like this helps communicate to partner organizations like that, that here's something that's of particular interest in this community. And it sort of opens the door to the conversation of help us, help us get the vision there. Um, so again, a quick toggle. At this intersection, I should note, there is already a plan in the works for a RRFB, so a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, um, which will absolutely help signal to drivers that pedestrians are trying to cross um at Park in Main, but um, this was sort of the longer term ideas. Could you reclaim a little bit of space um, on that north side of park to kind of amenitize it for pedestrians as well as create those kind of bulb out conditions. And then again, at um Park in Second. Similar idea of how do we create a really clear crosswalk condition? Um, and signal to folks with the built environment that, hey, you've, you've reached downtown Livingston. The depot is a really, you know, iconic building. Obviously, the Murray Hotel sign is iconic, but um, there's something about kind of a change in the streetscape that helps let folks know that you need to pay attention in a different way. Moving on to parks and open space, um. And I think this is one where it's also a well timed set of recommendations in that the city is about to embark on a parks master plan. So hopefully the recommendations in the plan sort of seed the clouds on how those things could be implemented. Um, the first I'll mention, it's a a dotted green line that runs up uh, north and south on Park, or sorry, on Main. And it was this, I would say, sort of not necessarily controversial conversation around street trees, but conflicting. There was absolutely a desire for street trees in and around the downtown and really just for shade green space in general. I think most of us default to trees to create that. Um, but we tried to, as you can see in the pictures on the right, at least note that if there aren't opportunities for street trees, whether that's a right away condition or a challenging cost of maintenance, or honestly, just a community skepticism. Are there other opportunities to create shade in kind of smaller pocket park configurations throughout the downtown? That give folks a a respite from the heat. Um. Similarly, on that, on that first photo, um, you know, are there opportunities to place street trees strategically so you don't mess up the sort of postcard view, um, looking at the mountains? And so you'll see recommendations in the plan that speak to short term opportunities, whether it's movable planters, um, whether it's public art instead of trees. Just to try to test some things out. Um, but where we landed based on a lot of public input was start on the south side of Main Street, um, in a place where there isn't as much focus on the sort of historic character or the kind of postcard moment of downtown Livingston. See how that resonates with the community. Use it as an opportunity to piggyback onto another um catalytic project idea, which was this notion of a festival Greenway Street that I'll show you in a minute. Um, and use that as a way to sort of test the idea out with the community. Another part of this post parks and open space section is um part of our scope in this plan was to look back at, as I mentioned, previous plans that had been done. And there were some great ideas in things like the streetscape enhancements master plan, um, that just haven't been implemented at this point. And so we tested those ideas with the community, ones that so resonated, we wanted to make sure we categorized um and cataloged in this plan. So again, a conceptual look at what could that festival Greenway Street be? Um, and so again, this is, the idea is on the south side of Main Street, um, how do you kind of extend some of the, the business momentum, I will say of the north end? Um, to help support the businesses that are on the south end and the other uses that are there, and then maybe pull some of that momentum to the park and vice versa. Um, and can you do it in a way that creates sort of an event space? You all have probably heard and and we heard through the process, and I'll just kind of toggle back and forth on these. Also differing opinions from business owners about closures and that some businesses benefit greatly from a street closure and some like lose out on all their sales potential. And so the idea was maybe you could, if you were going to have a closable condition in the downtown, maybe it would make sense to do so strategically where there are less commercial uses. Um, and maybe even like extend things like the farmer's market that is so wildly successful into downtown a little bit on a closable street. Um, to help let the, the business owners in downtown benefit even further from that uh kind of influx of activity. And then lastly, on the arts and culture end of the spectrum, a lot of this um focused on providing locations where you could temporarily sort of activate the downtown um, or permanently do so with public art or murals. And then a little bit longer term look um with the, the idea of the Second Street Promenade. The sort of orange squiggly line that goes down Second Street um was an idea that that came through pretty loud and clear from the community of, hey, the Second Street Promenade is great to connect us. But then, if we do that, couldn't we create this like really interesting art experience that pulls visitors down to, down to the park? Um, that kind of creates interest year round for the community if you're maybe not feeling like riding a bike or pushing a stroller um along the promenade. The other piece of this was really trying to find ways to create amenities that are multi generational. Um, there was a lot of discussion about especially from the, the youth we engage at the high school of this, a sort of sentiment of, I don't have a lot of reasons to come and hang out downtown. So if we could be strategic in these like pocket park locations and temporary locations for food trucks and things about populating the things that would resonate to, to a younger generation or an older generation, um. That would be really enticing. Um, and then, yeah, just trying to double down on that sense of downtown being sort of the, the third place of the community really. So after your home and your place of work, this is the place where kind of folks come together um and and socialize.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation, and uh Andy, Jen and I will stand for any questions that the commissioner may have.
Mr. Gager, let's start with what you're looking for from us this evening, maybe some options of I think you and I discussed this a little bit before, but if you could maybe give the commissioner some options about what you're looking for tonight. Um, what options might be, um, that might be helpful.
Yeah, a- absolutely. So um, you know, there is a, a draft of the plan before you this evening. Excuse me. And while staff and I, um, I feel very comfortable with the draft and confident that it reflects community input that we've heard over the last fourteen or so months. Um, you know, we certainly do recognize that uh that you folks are the, the governing authority here in the city of Livingston. And so um, you know, there may be items that uh, that, that you would like to see, that, that you feel maybe are uh worthy of, of some further review. Um, and, and so uh to the extent that the city commission um feels comfortable approving this this evening, uh, we at a staff level welcome that, and then we would move forward with uh making this an appendix to uh the growth policy. Um, that said, if there are some uh items of additional consideration that, that you folks would would like to see and and have some additional work done by uh Andy, Jen and everyone else. We're happy to do that as well and and bring back a revised draft, if that pleases the commissioner.
Thank you. Why don't we start with uh any clarifying questions? Go ahead.
On the, the highlight map. Uh, and it probably exists in other places as well, but um, it shows like the north path of the downtown area, having a recommended three to four story maximum building height. And then five to six on the south path.
Yeah.
I think of higher buildings as higher density, more bulk. And I'm curious why what, what the thinking is behi- behind there being more bulk to the south than, than to the north.
Great question. Um, so the driver in the community conversation on the, the piece to the north was to try to be as respectful as possible to the existing historic character. And so trying to stay mostly around three stories. We did hear from some folks that they were even uncomfortable with four. I think the important point on that was that right now it's an unlimited height. And so this is like already starting to, to taper things down from where it would be if somebody came in um with a proposal tomorrow. Um, and then the logic around allowing for greater heights on the south is that the, the natural topography of downtown sort of slopes down to the river. And so um, there, there are two like simulations on page twenty six that we had tested with folks actually of, of five, six and seven stories. Um, and they're, they're really, I would say conservative simulations in that we took the entire block face and extruded it up five stories. So it would be if you had no changes in massing plane height variation, et cetera, just to test kind of what that would do from the view at um Park Street. Absolutely, as you walk further south, those buildings would seem larger in perspective. Um, but what we heard from most folks was a, a real reluctance to go as high as seven stories because it started to infringe on the view, um, but a general comfort around five to six stories. So that was the, the driver was um, as the city is pursuing this zoning code update, have a, have a really robust conversation around what, what is an appropriate height limit. Um, and if there is some reluctance to be um, sort of diminishing that, that maybe there is an opportunity to allow for more density as you go further south, given the, the topography of the downtown.
Um, I, I appreciate that answer, and what I'm hearing from you is basically there was a sensitivity to maintaining the historic character on the, the northern part of downtown. As you move south, there's fewer of those buildings. Um, and then also the topographic um advantages kind of allow for it to be a little bit higher in terms of how it affects the view. Um. I, I actually really appreciate the simulated images here. It's really helpful to kind of get a sense of what that streetscape might look like. Um, if you ask me to just draw it. Um, if you asked me to just draw it from my, you know, artistic or lack thereof uh, abilities, I don't think that the six-story, um, massing would, would look so de minimis in the way that I would draw it. So it's helpful to see that. Um, so I appreciate that. Onto the streetscapes and mobility, um, as some might not be surprised to hear me comment on. Your point about the fact that Park Street is an MDT street is really important, um, and I think is maybe under considered when you, when we're trying to vision, uh, what might happen on this really important part of downtown. So I'm curious, and I know that, um, you might not have a ton of experience in Montana, but do you, are you aware of any examples of, um, streetscape interventions in Montana? On MDT, the, on MDT roads? I'm thinking maybe like, like, maybe some things happened like that in Whitefish. Um, but I'm curious if you have seen like successful, um, partnerships between cities and MDT that might have the potential of decreasing level of service, which I understand MDT to be very concerned about level of service.
No, it's, it's a great question. Um, I, I know that there are examples. Um, my partners on our team from Robert Petchy Associates have worked on a number of them. Um, and I believe some of the bigger ones are Helena, um, Cow Spill, Whitefish. They were really instrumental, I would say, in making sure that we sort of tried to thread the needle on the recommendations of leaving the door open for partnership and not like a unrealistic mandate, which I think is really sort of the art in these kind of master plan documents is not to, um, destroy the partnership before the partnership has started. And I do think, and perhaps, you know, Mr. Gager could speak to this, but, um, I think the city has had quite a few conversations already with MDT among Park and it seems like there's a lot of kind of mutual interest and respect towards making sure that it, it is a prioritized safe environment for folks.
Yeah, if I could just add quickly, we did have a team from MDT in town last Thursday and our planning director and public works director, uh, walked, uh, I won't say the entire length of Park Street and city limits, but, um, from town and country all the way up, uh, past our office out to D, I believe. And, um, and, and the team identified, the team from MDT identified the need for improvements that actually very closely matched what, what Andy saw. Um, and specifically, uh, bumping out from the north side of Park and potentially even shifting the, the roadway a bit south to give us some more pedestrian room there. Um, and they are actively reviewing our, our application for the rapid flashing beacons, uh, crossing Park as well. So, uh, we are optimistic based on the conversations we've had about the possibilities.
Great. Uh, that's great to hear. Um, yeah, I've been aware of challenging relationships between cities and their state departments of transportation. And so, um, I think that you're absolutely right that there's a need to find some, I don't know, to be, to be careful with that relationship. That said, those renderings that you showed were beautiful and they look supremely safer than what exists right now. Um, and they, to me, look like a place that tell people it's okay to walk here, which is not necessarily the impression that's given on Park Street right now. So, uh, really, really love to see it. And if that can happen someday, that would just be so amazing for our town. On that, uh, on that map I referenced earlier, there's, uh, indications for priority bikeways. Um, and maybe I missed it, but what, what sort of treatments to the street are you suggesting for priority bikeways? Great question. Um, I could probably find the recommendation number, but it, in short, um, it's looking at bike boulevard improvements. Um, and so I think there's a, an image on one of the pages of sort of a temporary kind of traffic circle in the middle of an intersection is, is one tool that you can use to do that. In some cases, there is constrained right of way. So it's hard to do something like a dedicated facility like we were suggesting on second. Um, however, a right of way like Yellowstone is pretty expansive. And so there's probably enough room to, and I should have mentioned this on the second one, to not lose parking, which I think is an important consideration for folks. So the, the second street promenade idea, even in the short-term condition and kind of reallocating the right of way, didn't take any parking out of that. Um, and so we were really looking at, um, the types of improvements on those facilities that could add a higher ease of use, maybe not like a, to the definition, high ease of use where it's grade separated, um, but create a dedicated space for a, a bike connection as opposed to like a just chero's. Not that chero's aren't effective, but, um, try to, there, there is a lot of sentiment expressed in the community that like that doesn't cut it. We need to take the next step.
So, uh, as a as a strident advocate for active transportation safety, I, I do appreciate kind of the consideration of what those different types of treatments provide in terms of safety and, and comfort for, uh, active transportation users. What, that being said, I know that to do kind of the more intense treatments is a more involved political process and it's a more involved ca- capital process. I think, I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot that could be gained even with a minimal intervention, um, particularly on the south side because of the way that the streets are oriented and the fact that we have twenty-five mile an hour speed limits in, in all, in all of the, um, area downtown. That's already a relatively comfortable biking environment. Um, and so I wouldn't want us to let perfect be the enemy of good as we, we talk about sometimes on, at, at these tables. Um, and I think that if we could try something or work really hard for a long time to maybe have the best thing, it might be more prudent to, uh, get something on the road. So I'm in favor of all kinds of treatments that, that, um, make biking and walking safer, um, and more appealing to folks in town. Um, but I think that it, a lot could be gained with even the most minimal, minimal of intervention on, on the street. Which I don't think is, um, I don't think there's anything counter to that assertion in here. I just want to make that comment. And I think that's it for me.
Um, can I piggyback off? Um, do you know offhand, uh, how many stories of Sherwood is? Is that seven?
Yeah, it's five.
It's five, okay.
It's a tall five, but it's, it's set back off the street.
Which makes a big difference.
That like the equal.
I couldn't remember. Just as, you know, point of reference, you know.
And that's where that, that five to six limit is being proposed.
Right, because.
So in line with what's already there.
Exactly.
What they're suggesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for, good questions.
More questions, clarifying questions?
I got a question. Should be fairly simple, I think. Page eleven, plan background, um, U State Park County, uh, roughly hundred thirty housing units per year, keep up with two percent growth. Livingston's been sitting along at about zero point nine percent. And then, uh, but then I see that we have, uh, Livingston can support eighty-five new housing units per year for the next ten. Is that eighty-five units in your scope or is that citywide?
No, citywide.
Citywide, okay. So not downtown, thirty-four single-family homes and things. Okay. That clarifies a lot of that for me. Thank you very much. Do you have a breakdown on what you want to see from the downtown versus the, I'll say rest of city?
We do have a little bit in the housing study that's in the appendix.
Okay.
Um, but the, the idea with that was rather than trying to prescribe a number of units for the downtown to just state the fact that the downtown would benefit from more residential activity within the downtown. Um, so getting more folks who are, have a vested interest in, you know, patronizing local businesses and keeping eyes on the street and taking advantage of maybe the, the new bike facilities. Um, but it, we weren't saying that the downtown had to absorb a certain amount of that growth.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks. Just to advisory. The next question I have is in the parking, um, plan. Uh, I see we have five hundred and thirty, uh, parking spots in lots and we have one thousand six hundred and fifteen spots on the street. So that's twenty-one forty-five in your downtown scope. Has there been an analysis done on what kind of revenue per spot is generated over the course of the year? For the city.
There was, there was not in this effort.
Okay. Just, uh, it was making a, a, a cost per spot for.
Yeah.
Parkings and things, how that is, I've gone, but, okay, cool. Thank you. That's all.
Other clarifying questions? I have one question that hasn't already been asked. Thanks. I sure like how you think. Um, it's about one of the recommendations that came since the land use board meeting. I'm, and I practices for Mr. Gager, I'm not sure, but I'm curious what exactly it means. Point number six, coordinate and adhere with state and federal standards for on-system routes. What exactly that means?
Um, that, that refers to work on the MDT system. And so as, as Andy pointed out, within the study area, uh, Park B and Geyser are, are urban routes that, that we manage. And so it is, um, I will say that is something that we do as a matter of practice anyway. Um, you know, we, we are always coordinating with our state federal partners on there on system routes.
For example, you just walked Park Street with MDT, right?
Exactly.
Um, I'm curious then, do you know, I wasn't at that meeting and I didn't watch it because we have consultants to do that. Thank you. Do you, do you know why they felt important to add that condition?
So we actually recommended that they do it. Um, we've been the consultant team and staff. MDT was kind enough to review the draft of the document and they provided pretty detailed comments. I think a summary of those are in your packet somewhere. Um, and I would say the, the general theme of a lot of those were, hey, this is a good idea. But before you get off and running on it, make sure you coordinate with us really closely, especially on these, what they call on-system routes, which they publish a new map of that annually. Um, I don't suspect any of those will change in Livingston in the near future, um, but it's, as Grant said, Park B, Geyser.
So it's based, it sounds like it was based on your conversations, you're in staff, some staff's conversations with MDT. Okay.
Yes. Yeah. And I think that's, uh, in my experience, it's a helpful sort of partnership building, um, nod also to show like, hey, this is grounded both in community vision and feasibility and reality and not just a laundry list of wishlist items that like adds to the work of MDT, but rather helps them focus their opportunities to help local communities.
Thank you. That was all my only clarifying question. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
May I ask one question?
Yes.
Uh, I think this is actually important for Mr. Gager. The downtown master plan includes parks. There's the, the second Julia Park and Miles Park. We're about to go through a Parks Master Plan. I imagine the, the gun diagram, this is probably going to overlap a lot. But in the event where there is disagreement, which plan supersedes? Which one's the chicken? Which one's the egg?
Um, you know, I would, uh, I, I, I would say that this document is for that downtown area and that study area. If there were to be projects that came out of the Parks Master Plan that were, um, not maybe downtown's focused, that were maybe more recreation focused or, you know, utilization of the park, because there really, you know, it is not a ton, um, here in Sacagawea Park to say, you know, add a pavilion in a certain spot or reconfigure the, the ball fields in, in Miles Park or, um, you know, work with and reconfigure that area behind the civic center, um, you know, to make it, you know. There's a little bit here, there, but not very specific, not overly prescriptive there. So I think as, as Andy kind of mentioned, this provides a jumping off point for a few of those conversations to more fully flesh out some of the details there, if that makes sense.
Can I piggyback off of that one? You can. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna piggyback off first, if that's okay. I think the other thing that I might remind you too, Commissioner Welch, is that both this plan, the mass, the downtown master plan and a Parks Plan are visionary documents. So their visions, they're not pers- prescriptive and so one, there's not really a superseding of one or the other, just ideas.
Sure.
Really, I think.
Aspirational.
Aspirational thoughts. I think, um, this is, I guess, a Mr. Gager question, but I think, you know, to Commissioner Welch's point, I was thinking about the second street extension to the river. And so, for example, might you or might the city staff take this document into the room when we, when we start to talk about Parks Master Plan to make sure that things are in alignment so that there's not a big conflict between, I don't know, farmer's market conversations or the extension of Second Street Art Walk into Promenade, as you called it, into the park? Like, is there a way that this could be part of that conversation just to?
Oh, it, it absolutely will be. And in fact, we had a, a kick-off meeting with the Parks Master Plan Team internally on Thursday. And, and really the, the area of greatest overlap that I see is, is the existing pool area. What becomes of that, you know, down the road. Um, and, and so that team is aware of these concepts and aware of that conversation as we move forward into that planning process as well. So, yeah, absolutely.
Great. I think it's a good question. No, I appreciate that question, actually. I think it's good with.
And in an ideal world, if, you know, at a staff level and with our consultant partners, if, if we do appropriate outreach, uh, in this project as well, appropriate outreach in the Parks Master Plan, because we are one community, you know, one might expect that the feedback and the response we get will be, you know, kind of hand in hand um, and not totally con- contradictory, but we'll find that out and start that process.
Yeah, I think the more granular you get with your outreach, you'll get more specific, this piece of property. You'll get a lot more input on that as it is, instead of like this whole citywide thing. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, I have a que- question, I guess, plus a comment, but more of a question. So, um, as Andy said, I, you talked about writing this plan and having it be visionary and sort of high level and that, you know, and then to not put some of the really specific ideas and thoughts into the plan itself. And certainly I, I read through all the comments and there were some really great ideas in there, but very specific. And so this might go to Mr. Gager, but just obviously I realize that we keep public comments on record. They are there. But if we, as we start to work within this plan and we pick out, you know, one of the goals of the objectives and start working on it, can, would we be sure then to go back to these comments and sort of pull up that, the, that information that we've already received from the public about maybe some of the more granular ideas around specific things? And those won't be lost, um, if this gets moved forward and those aren't specifically written into the plan.
No, absolutely. And that was, you know, really the genesis of this comment document and why we included it in your packet this evening is, is to get those on record, have them documented for perpetuity. Um, and, and also please know the, the, the team and I, uh, you know, earlier today, we're having conversations with Andy about these public comments. I mean, this really is where a lot of the work is done and where a lot of the important feedback comes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? I'm gonna ask how you would like to proceed at this point.
Push down a little break.
Okay, we can do that.
Oh, no, let's, let's figure out what we're gonna do.
I'm gonna ask you one more thing, but yes, I'm, I'm there with you as well. Um, so what I'm gonna ask is, you know, in general, we would put up a motion, then we would go to public comment. And I'm happy to do that, but I wonder if, I'm wondering, because this seems like a very iterative process that we've had so far. Would you like to hear public comment first? Would you like to hear public comment first before we make a motion? We can make that change if you'd like to, but I'm happy to proceed as usual as well.
I'm happy to follow the process in our handbook where we just make the motion.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Once again, we're not, it's not, it's not resolution.
We can always amend things.
Always can be amended.
Good at it. Okay. Well, we'll make sure we'll do that then. So then. I'm hearing the need for a break. Do I have a motion for a break?
It's reasonable.
Make a motion to take a timer break.
Okay, motion by shorts and a second by news. It is seven thirty-four, so we will be back at seven forty-four. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me, all in favor? Okay, I'm gonna call us back to order at seven forty-five PM. Uh, welcome back, everyone. Um, so we have heard from the consultant. We have asked clarifying questions and so I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion. Go back to the, starting the page. Can I intervene with a question before you make?
No. Absolutely.
The language, the language in the, um, packet. Just simply says adopt. Um, doesn't specify whether or not it will be in adoption will be. Added to the growth policy. So. That's kind of a layer of that we should consider in our motion, I think.
Okay, hold, we're gonna, I'm gonna cut us off for a second. I'm gonna ask you to hold for a moment. Sounds like there's some, Mr. Gager may have some follow-up information.
Yeah, thank you. It, um, to actually, to amend a growth policy is a separate process.
Okay.
That we would undertake separate from this one if, if it pleases the commission and that's the direction.
Okay, so the direction would be to approve it tonight, to just approve it as. How are we see fit? And then you would come back to us at a separate time to ask us to. A man that.
Yeah. There's, there's a separate noticing requirement to.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right.
I move to adopt the downtown master plan as proposed by staff.
I have a motion by shorts with a second.
Second.
Second by lines. Okay. So we have a motion on the table, so we will go ahead and open it up to public comment. We'll start with folks in the room. I remind you, you got four minutes. Um, so feel free to come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, um, and sign in if you would please, and then, uh, make your comment. Anyone in the row?
I'm Linda Moore. I live at one thirteen South M Street in Livingston here. It's, this is not a really formed, strong. Presentation or anything. Um, just a concern. I, you know, forty-five years ago, I moved from a very dense area of New Jersey. And, um, so I've learned to enjoy the wide open spaces here. And I would just caution. Uh, the notion of piling a lot of people on top of each other because it just doesn't work really well, you know, um. The more you remove people from nature and their own involvement with it and yards and things like that. The more you depersonalize people and whatnot. And I am living half of the block. From what was a true. You know, just a single family. Home on two city lots that now has eight. Wells. And there's a lot of problems just when parking already. The builder did not even put in a decent foundation. I happen to be a nosy neighbor and said. You know, I called the building department and said. Can they build a structure like this on a six-foot foundation, six-inch foundation wall? They said, no. They didn't call for an inspection. So I mean, there's been, there's, there's just things that start happening that. They ended up having to hire an engineer to approve. Uh, some modifications so that this would even be safe. It wouldn't have been probably if I hadn't said something about it. The, you know, I think we're a little bit short-staffed sometimes in the city to be able to handle some of the growth that's happening. So anyway. Like I said, I didn't really organize my thoughts well. I just really would like to state that there are things that happen. When you start like making very dense living. And so, you know, going. Seven, eight stories, things like that, um, in an area just to be able to, um. Minimize the infrastructure to, you know, spread and sprawl more. May not end up being such a great way to look at things. You know, there's other problems and there's other things that come along with that that could actually end up costing more. Resources at than just simply the, the pipelines and the electric, you know, to move out and sprawl a little bit. So that's really only thing that I've, you know. Wanted to put my two cents in on.
Thank you, Linda.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Hi, I'm Laura Bray of, uh, four oh nine South F Street. And I, I own the business downtown and have for twenty-six years. There's very few other business owners that have been in business. That long. Couple of, overall, I think this is the best effort I've seen and I've seen. You know, previous efforts at downtown, uh, planning. I think the gathering of information was great. They, you know, all kinds of methods were done. To do that. And I think there's some great ideas in, you know, the final document. A, a couple of. Things of concern are, one, the rollout of it. And, you know, the possible approval of it this evening. And I mean, we heard of the different. Things and timeline of it rolling out, but let, let me tell you my experience of it. I heard that it came out on the seventeenth. I heard that right around then. Didn't hear a word from the city about it as a downtown stakeholder till the fourth of August. When I was supposed to have comments in by the seventh of August. Now, summer for a downtown business owner is insane. For most of us, you know, it depends on, on what your business in is, is, but. I, you just don't have time. You don't have time to think about those things. You're exhausted at the end of the day. There was no way. I was gonna be able to comment from the fourth to the seventh, given what my schedule was like. And being kind of a rule follower in general. Um, I thought seventh, there's no way I can read this thing and comment by then. I rolled my eyes, threw up my hands and thought, oh, well, I guess I don't get to say so. Um, and then there were other opportunities, but it wasn't strongly put out there or solicited that they, you know. Comment was still really open because there was this dent that was given. There, you know, was then further information about the planning board. Not planning board, land use board, I guess it, it is now. And, uh, you know, when I complained to Grant about the rollout of, uh, comments. And just being notified three days before. You know, he said, make sure, you know, try to go to this or look at, uh, um, recording of it, which. I was finally able to do yesterday, only because I closed my business to do that. To try to roll this document out when many of the main stakeholders. Are in the middle of their two to three months of make or break. Business-wise is kind of crazy. At least if it's this confined. And I know Andy at the, uh. Land Use Board said, well, three weeks is more than usual. Well, that would be fine if we had gotten notified on the seventeen. But the city didn't, you know, I, well, except for the flyer down at City Hall. Now, how many business owners or building owners do you think got down to City Hall during that time? Probably not very many. If they had put flyers up and down the streets downtown, yeah, some, some of us may have seen those. But the lack of just simply even emailing everybody. And yes, Andy and his outfit did email people and I'm probably on that list, but. If I saw Andy, somebody or another on my email, and I get about a hundred. Spam emails a day that I have to sort through. Or a crescendo planning, is it? I wouldn't have known who they were. That probably went right to junk. It didn't come from the city of Livingston. I was totally expecting that something would be coming from the city of Livingston. That gave a link to where I could look at the plan. And that, that didn't, you know, come till so much later. And I'm not, I know I'm not the only person. Because when I brought it up to other business owners, they had no idea it was even being considered just yet.
Who are your four minutes is up?
I'm sorry. Okay.
Did you, I would like to give you the opportunity though, if the commission would be so kind, is there, do you have any? We hear you on. But I would, if you have a topic or two that you would like to actually give a comment on, that would be helpful to us. So if.
So.
Yes, can we give you, we'll give you three minutes. Would you, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so. My biggest, uh, concern about it is the. There was lots and lots and lots of good information about housing and housing development downtown. There was very little information about the economic development of business and how these things. Uh, would or could impact business there. Most times when I've seen plans like this. There's information about, you know. This many low housing or, or low income housing and this much higher is a good, you know, balance and you. Yeah, it's good to have X many people living in downtown, um, to have a good, you know, uh. What's the word? Basically, to have a good thriving downtown, you need to have a mix of business and housing. And types of housing. And, um, there was, as I said, tons of information. About the housing component, but there was darn little about economic development or, uh, business. Business and business locations and, and how to help them develop. And yet, the vacancy rate, it said for. Businesses was effectively zero. I mean, uh, there wa- there was no vacant space. I get people asking all the time if I know of any. Retail space coming up or office space coming up. I've never been asked about housing space coming up. But with my business on the corner there, they stop in all the time and ask for those. And yet. What was said about the strong, you know, need for that, it, it didn't, you know, take up. What seemed like half the document was on housing. And I, I understand why there was a lot put on housing because. The community desperately needs more housing and it needs more affordable housing. The numbers don't really seem to, uh, pan out for much affordable housing downtown. Unless there's a lot of public money that gets, uh, put in, that numbers don't make sense. But. Boy, I, it would be nice to have some information about, uh. You know, what are good ratios of different levels of housing? We already have in the low to affordable income, we've got the Sherwood. We have the senior center, we have the Miles Building, we have the Albemarle. So there's already a lot of low. Uh, to affordable income housing downtown. And I think they said half of the low to afford. Or low income housing was in that downtown zone. So maybe the other.
Okay, thank you, Mary, or Laura. Excuse me, thank you very much. Anyone else in the room?
Patricia Grable, two oh forty's calendar. First, I want to say that Chris Shando is about the nicest people I ever met. Thank you for being so courteous to us. It's so, he's a listener and he's a kind man and. And you just like. That said. I mean, did, he did even put verbatim what our downtown building owner said when, when we were talking about this. Can I underscore and underscore what Laura just said? Over, I mean, big underscores. I mean, what she said is what? Building owners did not have time. They didn't, there's, this is the PDCs and they don't have fifteen minutes. So that was hard to, for them to get back to you, Andy, anyway. Secondly. I, I, what we did at the downtown building owners is, and you were so kind to us, is we finally just said, okay. We have to have this, but it's got to have something where we can amend it and amend it and amend it. And at one point, the city manager had said we could possibly have downtown building owners and business. Meetings once a month. And so that we could talk with each other. So what we did ahead. In the downtown building owner businesses, we just said, okay, this is not gonna, there's so much more. Um, we felt like. You know, we're going into global warming. The next twenty years is not gonna look like this. Five years is not gonna look like this as far as people like me who are very committed to the environment. Five years is gonna be a huge cha- change as far as global warming. So we created equal tourism. We created. World Heritage Tourism. We created a brainstorm about what she's talking about. Which you can't do, which is the economics of keeping our businesses alive. Our businesses are down. They're gonna be down next year more than they are this year and they're gonna be down next year after that. And, and so we just really wanted, we took a look at economic. Health that he couldn't do. And because we're here, we live here, we, every single day. And that's why the. The hydrogen trains and getting the shops back to work was one of the things that we looked at. Because, um, we're not gonna make it. Um, otherwise, um, these, there's some really terrific things in this plan. But we have to have some sort of vehicle. Where we, we deal with the economic health of our downtown, whereas it's toast. It, it is irrelevant. If we aren't making a living or if we are making any kind of living. You have smart growth from your inside out. If the, if the inside is, is healthy economically and it's about. I, I love Second Street, by the way. I, I'm disappointed in B Street. Uh, page thirty-four. We, we already have those avenues or trees. Our, our business has said unequivocally, no ball bouts. In the historic center. Not further down around Sherwood, but we said that takes away from the historic center. We didn't have, our snow removal was, wouldn't be that good. And we are a world heritage site. So, we have to take all that into consideration and please, let's figure out some way. That we can hear what Laura is saying and the other business owners are saying. Uh, in order for us all to survive. And financially is first and foremost.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else in the room?
Hi, good evening commissioners, uh, my name is Catherine Daly, I reside at five twenty South Main Street here in Livingston. And I'm just commenting tonight um on behalf of the Park County Housing Coalition. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Andy and the team at Crescendo and his colleague Matt at uh Economic Planning Systems for. Excellent process that they have run so far and the many um, the many and diverse opportunities for engagement. Um, I've had. Tremendous experiences uh during, during those events and through other means of sharing feedback and have been really heartened to. Um, see those, many of those comments um thoughtfully reflected in the draft that you are reviewing today. Um, I have had so many opportunities to comment that I will keep this brief. Um, generally, uh, I think the vision expressed. In the plan before you is one that supports both the preservation of existing housing. In our downtown, which is very important, and the creation of new housing in a high opportunity part of our community that offers um. Uh, exceptional opportunity for economic mobility and advancement by community members who um reside in and around downtown. Um, it's a vision that preserves the downtown's current role as a reservoir for the county's rental housing stock, which. Um, represents only thirty percent of the county's housing stock overall. We have a high share of ownership in the county as a whole and so it's very important that we. Continue to invest in rental housing, um particularly when we're seeing economic gains in sectors where folks are. Making amounts where homeownership won't be within reach for them while they're working in those sectors um necessarily and then. This is a vision that accurately defines um affordability for working renters and homeowners and will be a useful guideline. Um, for investments moving forward um and it is a vision that widely um. Uh, promotes investment in our downtown to support housing preservation and creation. Um, through strategies related to the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, so I just wanted to again uh thank the planning team and the city staff for their efforts. Uh, on this plan and encourage you all to adopt this plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. I think we've gotten everybody in the room, so we'll go online. Um, is there anyone online that would like to make public comment? Feel free to raise your hand or. Come off mute and give us your name. Anyone online? I'm not seeing anyone, I'm gonna ask one more time, feel free to come off mute, give us your name. I am seeing none, so we'll go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners.
Yeah, I've, maybe I just wanna. Get some clarification on. Do people mention economic, economic development and stuff like that? And uh, but I haven't heard specifically what. As a city commission or. That we can do. That we aren't already doing by actually making the downtown an attractive place and with, you know, with this master plan. Making it better than it already is. Um, I don't know, anybody else can help me address that, I'm. I, I'm not. I'm at a loss, you know, I understand, you know, businesses do struggle, have struggled and stuff like that, but. I'm in a side of, from giving away money and stuff like that, I don't know. You know, what more we can, what we can do besides make an attractive, you know, place to do business and be here.
Perhaps we ask Mr. Gager and then I don't know if Andy has anything on that either, but Mr. Gager, I would start with you.
Um, no, it's, it it is an excellent, um, this is an excellent question that you ask commissioner and um, and and I have spent some time. Uh, with the team over the last uh several days, weeks, months, you know, kind of pondering a little bit of that economic development question, right? And, and so, you know, in, in the public sector, our, you know, responsibility really is to kind of. Um, set the table, if you will, and we do that in several ways. We do that through our zoning, um, what uses are allowed, aren't allowed. Uh, we do that through our infrastructure projects and our, you know, maintenance and uh operation and care for those public spaces, including the right of way. Um, and all that and 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 you folks have, over the years, you especially, um, Commissioner Schwartz and Commissioner Newt. Have voted for a lot of downtown infrastructure projects, um, and and have seen a lot of that work in the downtown. Um, and and our partner agencies such as the U R A have done actual private property work by doing the facade programs. And and some of those, um, again, to help set the table in downtown. Um, and and I'll, I'll allow Andy to to provide some, some additional comments, but I I will say, you know, we um. When this contract was awarded, the, the Urban Renewal Agency came up with additional funds. To specifically study the parking and housing components of downtown. And and that was done for several reasons. Um, first and foremost, um, you know, the, the um. Growth policy talks a lot about housing in the downtown and infill housing. Um, and so, uh, there, there was that motivation and then parking. Uh, in city management, parking is one of those topics that is omnipresent, we're always, always thinking and talking about parking, right? And so. You know, I, I think there was a recognition by the U R A Board and some others, um, yourselves included, who who awarded the contract, that those two elements of downtown. Possibly uh required a little bit of deeper study, um, because, um, you know, in the case of housing, perhaps we haven't seen the housing production. In the, in the downtown area that one might have otherwise expected, um, and and parking again is just one of those curious questions. Um, when it comes to the economic development portion, I will say in, in my tenure here. Um, and in recent years, we have not seen really a lack of investment in the downtown area from a commercial space. Um, and a commercial property standpoint, uh, we see, you know, a healthy flow of transactions. Um, of of buildings actually in the core, um, we see some turnover of businesses. Um, but we don't see spaces that that really are vacant for very long. And we don't see high turnover of businesses, there's not a high failure rate, right? And so, a- at least. Um, you you know, by, by many measures, it seems like our, our downtown economy is actually functioning relatively health, healthily. Uh, we don't have, you know, maybe the diversity, the economic diversity that we might um uh otherwise look for and and some of that is is touched upon here. Um, and and there are things that the, the U R A uh and others that play an active role in business attraction. Are are, you know, pushing on to help some of that diversity, but. Um, again, you know, the, the investment is happening, we see new businesses opening, we see, you know, the, the few that that do close. Um, generally, those buildings seem to turn over relatively quickly and new tenants are in. Um, and and so I think that wasn't um perhaps as high as a priority, um, but I guess I'd, I'd turn it over to Andy. Um, oh, and Jen to see if they have any additional thoughts there.
Yeah, I think I would echo everything that Grant said. Um, I think the only other things I would add is that. Sometimes it's, it's admittedly a little awkward to even have an economic development section in a plan like this because. The premise, as Commissioner Force was sort of alluding to, is, is this idea of like the rising tide lifts all boats and so all of these improvements on land use activation, streetscape sections. It's supposed to improve the attractiveness of the downtown. Um. I think the downtown, as we heard, it, it does benefit from the fact that there is a low vacancy, so it's. It's great that the downtown isn't in a position, isn't in a position of like needing to wholly reinvent itself. Um, and we did try to like see the clouds a little bit in some of the other sections with economic development recommendations, so as. Grant was speaking, I. A couple that came to mind were things about working with tenants and landlords and property owners to encourage and. Encourage seasonal use agreements for retail spaces and a big part of that is there are businesses and this isn't. Unique to specifically Livingston, but that have seasonal peaks and valleys, of course, and so finding ways to. Have multiple business types be able to occupy maybe in complimentary seasons and there's a couple of those businesses that are happening already downtown. Sometimes it's an opportunity for a, a food truck or an entrepreneur to like get a shot at a brick and mortar for three or four months and see if it's got legs. Um, and then I think another like huge benefit that Livingston has is that you've got a really active. Bid, you've got a really active chamber, you've got a really active business owners and building or big building owner and business association. And so finding ways to like leverage all that passion and momentum and have the city or the U R A or member. Be the kind of convener of channeling that energy. Um, one of the recommendations we had was like a coordinated marketing plan so that you make sure that like folks who are already stretching their limited resources aren't. Inadvertently like duplicating F R I S. Um, and so there's, there's subtleties like that, I would say that do point at specific. Kind of business owner or building owner initiatives, um, but I would just say on the whole. The whole point of the downtown master plan is like, how do you make sure that it's a really like vibrant and diverse mix of uses? Does that answer?
Yes, and thank you again, by the way, um, awesome presentation, it's not the, let the lead with that that started by.
Thanks.
Um, I was very uh, very impressed, very impressed.
I just, I just wanna like add, I think other things that we've done is like we've talked quite a bit about like gateway. So like the gateway, like the, when people come into town and wait, finding how to move people downtown. Um, not to step into Commissioner Lyons' lane, but we talk about transportation a lot and like. How people move through the environment, so I appreciated the conversation about. Like making it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists to slow down. I think there's a lot of data. Um, to show that like when people start slowing down, looking through community, they spend more money locally. Um, so I think there's a lot of things that don't seem directly tied to supporting the local businesses that are directly supporting local businesses. With how we manage like public spaces.
I mean, our, our role is somewhat limited, you know.
It's over the public, yeah.
Yeah. You know, and you can't tell what business to move downtown and stuff like that, people complain about our salaries. Well, they must be doing pretty good because they keep, you know, multiplying and stuff like that and um. So I, I, I just, you know. I mean, if I. You know, this is what this is all about, this is how we get to. Make it more attractive to, or economic development, are these sorts of things, and the growth policy and stuff, it's all rolled into one, so. I just, you know, just so, I mean, our role is kind of clear what, you know, we, what we can do and cannot do, so. That's what I wanted to kind of clarify and and since it was brought up, you know, twice. I'll yield.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, others. Mr. Lyons.
Um, on the, the comments about. The challenge of um accessing the process in, in a busy time, I think that that's valid, I understand it, I. Feeling overwhelmed myself and um. A lot of times, we sit here and we consider. How can we make this better before we make it policy? Um, and what's kind of. Different in this case is not even policy, it's a, it's really a visioning document that represents the feedback that. Was received by the community and the, the, the insight and the expertise of uh of our planning staff and of the contractors that. That, that produced it to say, here's, here's a, here's a great path for, for the city to go down and this is kind of what we see it looking like. And. Where the rubber hits the road will be when we are implementing that and make policy out of that vision. Um, and so, right now, we're just kind of putting a picture up on the wall and saying. This is, this is a direction we're thinking for downtown and that's really what it, what this document means. And then there will be opportunities in the future when we're actually implementing it and we're changing our code and we're changing our. Our, our zoning ordinances and so forth, that we're gonna, we're gonna have a public process all over again in, in the implementation. Um, and so it's kind of up to the city staff to, to, to follow this, this visioning document. Into implementation via policy and policy is gonna happen right here at this table and you, and everyone is going to be invited to that table again. Um. So that's not to diminish the fact that it's, that that it's hard to, to access this process. But it's just to say that there will be more opportunities to access this process and there was even a, a comment of, I hope that we can amend this. If, if there are glaring omissions or glaring just discrepancies in, in how. You know, and things that that might have been missed, there are opportunities to amend it, in fact. If, eh, you know, if we get there, this will be an amendment to the growth policy. Remember the growth policy four years ago, we're still amending that today. Um, and so. That, that, that process continues, those opportunities continue and the ship hasn't sailed, like we, we have, we haven't. Designed downtown and it's set in stone and the, and it's gonna be that way. Um, there, there will be many more opportunities to, to participate in. Um, ensuring that, that the policy that, that is helping to enact this vision um is in line with, with. The needs of, of downtown businesses and the needs of the entire community who patronize those downtown businesses and enjoy that downtown. Um, in, in a different way than a, than a business owner does, so.
Thank you. Other commissioners?
Will we, can I just ask, are we deliberating right now? Is this our?
Although for just a quick second, um. Sort of coat tail off of both Commissioner Lyons and Commissioner Schwartz. We have a hundred and ninety-seven pages of document that we're just. Put in front of us that are. General guidelines and. I'll say rough ideas that all need to be polished before they turned in, get turned into. Policy, every one of them actually, and so. This is the first step towards, first step in twenty-two years, I'll say, of a downtown plan of. Uh, making sure that our downtown is. Maintained as we want to see it and so, I think we'll all have lots of opportunity to discuss. And have our say. Hundred and ninety-seven pages, I'd say. Um, now to the economic aspect of things, um, I am um. An enjoyer of economics and the macro style especially. Uh. If we have such low. Vacancy rates in our buildings downtown. Which I think we said. That means that the. What's working is continuing to work and the filter of economics is what doesn't work. Doesn't work for very long and something else comes in and whether it works for a long time or it works for a short time. It has to be subjected to the same economic pressures that every other business in town has. Uh, specifically downtown has. Um. I would love to see a, 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 a look at our various sectors, we have retail sector, we have tourism sector, hospitality sector. Um, I'd like to see a manufacturing sector take a look at, what, what do we build? But what jobs do we have that are twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five that are not tourism based?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd like to see an IT sector of potentially somebody designing some computer software or something, you know. A handful of people making three hundred thousand dollars a year, that'd be great. Um. But that's not the city's job. That is private enterprises' job, is to discover us and say, I feel like investing in. The city of Livingston and the people of the city of Livingston and. Building either a manufacturing plant or a IT company or something along those lines. Um. But again, that's not the, that's not the city's job, that's private enterprise. Um, I think what we have here is a um. Is an exciting document. I am um thankful to the uh Crescendo Group for putting this together for us. And um. Yeah, this is a lot of turnout for a year, like there's a lot of input. I gave some, my input a few times on some things. I even saw one of the stickies that I wrote, so uh. Yeah, I, I appreciate that and I hope that the people of the city of Livingston, the users of the downtown, the city of Livingston and the people that have made the city. The downtown part of the city of Livingston, the business owners, uh, continue to put in their input. I think this is a living document and as soon as we start to implement it, we'll have a little bit of friction, but eventually we'll get a lot of this. We'll have a little bit of friction, but eventually we'll get a lot of this stuff figured out and nailed down and. Hopefully it's not another twenty two years until we see another, uh, master plan. But, uh, ideally, I'd like to see a co-tail off of this plan like this plan has co-tailed off. Or not the crescendo plan, it was. Intranco, was that the company? Yeah, the Intranco plan twenty twenty twenty, or excuse me, two thousand and two, so. Um. Thanks again, appreciate it. And, uh, I yield.
Nice turn, Neil. My turn. Um. I'm gonna share. Some comments and some things I really like. So I remember when you first came and saw us. I probably made some comment about how I didn't want it to go process wise like the growth policy went. I, does that sound okay? That was, that sounds on brand for me. So I'm really pleased that. Um, and what I mean more specifically by that is it was this huge lift for our volunteer board over several months to edit a document. Because the community, um. Felt like they weren't heard on some really key issues. And so it was just a labor. I was a commissioner on the planning board then. Commissioner Lyons was not yet a commissioner, but on the planning board. And it was just this huge, huge time investment, like four hour meetings, I think, what, every couple of weeks?
Mm hmm.
Um. So thank you, crescendo, for hearing that our community wants a good process and meeting us where we are. Um. I really appreciate that you listened and you trusted the people that live here and you edited that document before it came to us. That's so huge. I mean, because we obviously trust the people that live here. So thank you for also trusting them and. For the staff that allowed those edits to be made. Thank you, Mister Gager, before it ever got to us. Um, I think it makes for a nicer meeting. Um, in a lot of ways. I wanna share some things that I really like specifically about this document. I liked, I live on the north side. We all know I'm the only north side commissioner. I liked that there were some ideas for the north side included that sort of extend that downtown across the tracks. Um, to some land that's probably underutilized and it was new ideas that we hadn't heard before. So thank you. That included the, um, development, if you remember, just passing underpass.
Yep.
There were some ideas there and then, um. Of course, around the depot, like where so many of our kids walk on the way to school, just make, and we all know that there was recently folks that had a not great. Situation crossing, which I wish I could say that that's unusual, but I think lots of people are scared, my kids included, to cross the track or to cross that highway regularly. So I was excited to see some of those ideas, um, in addition to knowing we have some flashing beacons coming. So thank you. I thought that was really fun. Um. Also. I appreciated your ideas for testing out different ideas. So it's a little bit less scary for the community, like Second Street. Alternatives to trees, starting on the south side of downtown, um. Really appreciate that sensitivity to business owners. Of street closures and also the ideas about the farmers markets. How that could complement our downtown without competing it, competing against it. I also really appreciated the Second Street promenade. I hadn't considered. How nice that could be for kids getting to school. Um, because it's not great to bike to school. Just ask any of us that have kids. Um. Just that safety measure and putting kids right over on the side of town where not all the schools are, but a lot of the schools, by the time kids are independent, at least they're. Usually on that side of town, um. If they're public school kids. Uh, I love the renderings and simulations like Commissioner Lyons already alluded to the building height visuals. I won't go on at length because you already brought that up, but I thought that was really helpful. To see that it's maybe not quite as scary as. You know, putting a really tall building next to the Murray or something. So thanks for that. Um, it felt like inclusive learning document, like being really aware, like that lots of people taking information in different ways. I also, um. I want to thank the city staff actually for being proactive with. N dot Montana Department of Transportation and other partners before this even came before us. So that we could, um, have a better understanding if anything would be feasible. I think that's not a small thing for you all to have done. And it deserves credit where credits do. Um, thank you because we don't want to waste anybody's time. So thank you for doing that work. And I'm aware that you've been putting in the work since you've got here. But it's not like the first time you've talked to N dot that you've been doing it for a while, leading up to. Moments like this where you maybe need to make an ask on behalf of our community. So thank you. Um. Also. Sitting here listening to you tonight, I, this, there's like a lot I think that needs to be acknowledged, so I'm just gonna keep talking for a minute. Um. The timing of the downtown master plan, I. I will be honest and say I didn't fully understand the order of events in the city of Livingston and why we were doing certain plans in certain ways. I'm guessing this is a you thing, Mister Gager, that I can give credit to, but I'm gonna name it and then you can tell me if I'm wrong. Um, the timing of the downtown master plan with the zoning update. Followed closely by the parks master plan to Commissioner Welch's point, making sure our documents fall in line with each other. The gateway overlay zoning. The food truck conversations. The downtown housing study, the downtown housing recommendations. Downtown parking study, downtown parking recommendations, building height. These are all things that have been super contentious in the last six years for me, since I've been here. Not done yet. So building height, downtown trees, bulb outs, parklets. Bike lane or cycle track, whatever you want to call it. Pedestrians on Park and Main, especially near the underpass. That's only fifteen things that I came up with while sitting here. There's probably more. All of these things that have been huge and contentious things are coming together right now with solutions in order. I would say thanks to you. Thank you, Mister Gager, because now I'm seeing like why you ordered things a certain way on agendas. Thank you. This is fantastic and exciting. Um. And also like all from the growth policy. I think there is this implication that perhaps Mister Gager has an agenda. And that's why there are studies that it's a city manager prerogative. I would say no for. Those of us, and there were more than just two of us at those planning board meetings, those conversations about downtown. Started long before Mister Gager was even in Montana. I mean, maybe you were visiting. I don't know what you were doing in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, but, um. All that came from our community way before you got here. So I just want to give credit where credit's due also to our community is the one that asked for this. Not any one person at the front of this room. So it's a lot of words. But I think there's a lot here. One of the best agendas I've read in a long time. Really great. Really exciting. Um, is it perfect? No, nothing is. Is there a lot of exciting things in there? Yes. Livingston did not disappoint. Like, there were ideas that I couldn't have imagined that I saw in there, which is really fun. Um, I'm sure they came from our community because most great things do. Um, the only, the only question I have or sort of concern is about one. Of the recommendations. On. One of the amendments that came from Land use board. And that was the one that I named about. Coordinate and adhere with state and federal standards for on system routes. Not because I disagree with that recommendation. I agree with recommendation. My only concern is it feels a little like. It feels a little bit like the commission telling staff how to do their job when I think it's already the expectation that staff will do that, because this is really like. This is getting in the weeds of what certain department heads and their staff would do on a day-to-day basis. And so I don't know if it's appropriate in a visionary document. But I appreciate the intention is to build a good relationship with Montana Department of Transportation. I think the most important relationship from my perspective. Is the executive and the legislative branches staying in their lanes and working well together, but I'm only one commissioner, right? And that's my priority, um. I'm curious what other folks think. I think that, you know, Mister Gager and his crew are gonna do that anyway. Based on what we've seen from him in the last. I don't know. Almost two years, I guess it's been, but. That was a lot of words and I don't want to talk anymore. I want to drink some water, so I yield.
Um, so that leaves it to me for the moment, um. You all said a whole lot of things that I don't need to say now, so thank you. Um, but what, what I will say is I've heard lots of really wonderful, positive comments about this process and I'm really excited to see how it went. So thank you. Andy and the team and Mister Gager and the city staff, um. It was really amazing to see all the different touch points, um. To, to get this information and there were a lot of really cool pages in there. Um, so I appreciate all of that. The one thing I might, and this is sort of a, a question too, but, um, I'm curious. I did read in some of the comments, a, a couple of comments about no, um. No mention of climate change in this document. And then I feel like Patricia kind of. Heart, you know, talked about that a little bit as well. And I do wonder, you know, as we're. As the cha, as our climate is changing and it's going to continue to change. Andy, if I may put you on the spot, I, I'm wondering, you know, do you, I'm curious to hear from you, like, do you feel like that is something that should be included? In the document? Obviously you wrote the document, you didn't put it in there, but I just. Or are you hearing recommendations or obscene recommendations? About climate change and documents like this that other communities are doing and. I would just like. Just asking you, you can, yeah, I'm just curious.
Human step.
Wait, wherever you're comfortable. You're allowed enough from there.
I think, I think it's a great question. Um, so on the first one of, I guess, like why it's not in the document. We tried really hard to include stuff that was clearly consensus.
Mm hmm.
And to be honest with you, like personal beliefs aside, we heard like very strong opinions on both sides. Um, and so. We tried to get at it with some of the recommendations without like explicitly. Um, harping on it, I would say.
Hmm.
On the question of whether we see that in documents like this. I think we do sometimes, but I think more typically they're like countywide or citywide documents because they have. Much greater applicability than just our kind of imagine, it's not an imaginary boundary, but are like very weird geometry of this study area. So we did have, um, in the Land Use Board presentation, we had gone through. A number of like, here are kind of. Thematic groupings of comments that we heard. They're absolutely like worth the city exploring. They're absolutely valid, but they didn't. Like make the cut almost because of X, Y, Z. And in some of those, it was. Because it's typically more appropriate to have like a much bigger community conversation about those. And not that. Not to take like a defeatist perspective that if we took specific measures in downtown, it wouldn't be making a difference, but we would make a much bigger difference if we could do it. Citywide, countywide, statewide. So, um, all that is to say, I think it's a, it's a really good example of there were some. Phenomenal ideas that we got in the public comment. That are. Both applicable to downtown, but also are super, super applicable citywide. Um, so I would encourage the city to like. Dig back into the archive for those and have that conversation. Um, so yeah, we, we do see, I feel like with. Um, increasing frequency, there's a lot of like, whether you call it a climate action plan or a resiliency plan or sustainability plan, there's different flavors. Um, for sort of different scales of communities, but. We're seeing more and more of those. Um, so that folks can get out ahead of it as, as much as you can at this point.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, great.
So much, yeah. Um. I think it's a great plan. I think there's a lot of really, um. Great ideas, thoughts, and as you said, nuggets from, you know, this, the community that, that have. Added to that archive. So thank you for archiving all of that for us as well and to have it there to go back to. Um. I don't want to repeat what everybody else said. Y'all said it so lovely. Such a neat one for me to say, um. Melissa, or vice chair news, I, I might touch on your. I'm gonna look at your.
Pink one?
Yeah, your pink one. Um.
I highlighted in pink. It's not a secret.
Yeah, I know. Um. To adhere with state and federal standards for. On system roads. It doesn't. I will just say, it doesn't bother me so much. Um, you know, yes, I think it is something that. The staff is gonna do anyway, um. But I also. You know, sometimes it's, it's nice to. To maybe even from an outside source remind folks a really great way to work with partner organizations and, um, to give them some. Some ideas about how that might work. So to me, it, it doesn't bother me, but that's, I'm just.
Thank you.
Reflecting on.
Having a document like this helps sell the idea of the state as well, so.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
I may, I think it also. Highlighting that need of this partnership. Sheds light on the fact that, um. Some of. Some of what's included in the plan. Requires coordination beyond just the city itself.
Mm hmm.
And. From my understanding, that coordination is really challenging and because cities. Are used to doing work on their own roads and not having to talk to anybody about that other than the residents. And. When you, when you increase that level of bureaucracy to the state. Things change and the state has a lot of authority over what happens on this road that runs through, through our city. Um, and it, it, it just, it just is a challenge and it's just to expect. To expect, um, the vision to come to fruition. On a city street versus a state road. The, there, those should be two different expectations. And so calling out the need for that partnership, I think, kind of. Gives a little bit of. Um, allowance for that different process.
Mm hmm.
Um, and so I. I. I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from on that of like. We're getting into the weeds of telling staff how to do their job and I, I respect that, um, sensitivity. And also. I think that the function of that statement. Um. Goes like, gets a little broader than just telling staff how to.
Mm hmm. I think it might also help set expectations for. The citizens.
Yeah.
Um, so that they kind of realize to like. Who would have thought that, you know, we're ready to put in. Flashing beacons and that's something the whole community wants, but we're stuck waiting now to. Make sure the M D T says we can do that, right? And I, it's, I don't think that's something that everybody knows, you know? So I think it's important.
Uh, you know.
Sure, that's my thing.
Uh, I don't, uh, I mean. I think you'll find out pretty quickly if you start partnering on, on M D T, so you're not allowed to do it, so. Yeah, I mean, you could leave it in or take it out. You're gonna find out you have to coordinate.
Yeah.
I have no strong feelings about that either on that.
I mean, I think I'm. I think I'm more. What's more important to me than the statement is the conversation about what is and isn't our authority. And always making sure that we're like staying.
Getting in our way.
In the legislative lane, um. I do appreciate that the public doesn't always know because why would they? Because they're not at meetings all the time like we are and that's why they elected us, so they don't have to come, so. Um. Because I know like when we talked about. Things on the planning board with the growth policy or even like gateway overlay zones on that same planning board back in the day. That there wasn't always an understanding that we couldn't just do whatever we wanted on railroad property or the highway. Um, but I appreciate the conversation and just being able to talk about it with the commission, like. What we can or can't do as a commission, so thank you.
You put an asterisk on it. You just say, we're not telling you what to do.
Now, I feel like maybe this conversation was hopefully enough to demonstrate that, but. Oh, there is one other thing unrelated that I would like to say. There was a comment that perhaps the city of Livingston did not send out an email. With, there was no city of Livingston email about the public comment period, but I think Mister Gager. I didn't go do a review of all the city manager emails, but you've sent at least a couple. Emails that talk specifically about the downtown master plan, right? I mean, more than a couple.
Mm hmm.
So there are. City of Livingston, so. Maybe folks should make sure they're accepting. Emails from, what is it? City manager at Livingston, Montana? Is that where you send it out from?
You know, it actually comes from webmaster@livingstonmontana.org.
Okay.
And, uh, the. You know, notice did come out on, uh, Sa- Saturday, July thirteenth. Um, notifying people that the, the, the draft was coming out later that week. And so that was really the first notice of. The final product being available. But yeah, so over the course of the last fourteen months, there have been a number of.
I've seen that logo over and over that crescendo made, I think, um. And if people aren't on that. It's really easy to get on. That's probably the best source, I would say, to see what the city staff and the city commissioner are up to. Um, like the most reliable way to find out where to comment and when to comment on things.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify for you. Subscribe to the city managers newsletter.
Yeah, I, I think you can do it pretty easily on the website.
Yep.
Um, I'm sure you can call the city offices if you don't know how and somebody will help you, but. There's a lot of good information, even for commissioners in that newsletter, so. Um, just want to be clear that I, the city did send things out. Perhaps it went to spam. Make sure you're not, you're marking those email addresses as not spam, so you get them in your inbox. That's all that I had to say.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? Who shares anything else? Any other further deliberate deliberation, comments, questions?
At this point.
All right, if that's the case, then I am gonna call the roll. I'll help please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Newt.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or Commissioner Lyons.
Or Commissioner Willage.
Or.
Motion passive, thank you. All right, so we are moving down our agenda. And we had one addition to our agenda this evening. Um, and that is going to be a closed session. Um, so I am going to make a motion. That we're gonna do a closed session, but before I do that, I'll explain what's happening. So we are in a closed session pursuant, uh, to MCA two, three, two zero. Three, four, A. We're doing that, um, to discuss some litigation. Um, and so we will close the room, we'll have to ask everyone to leave. Um, and then we will open the room back up after the closed session for city manager comments and commissioner comments and to adjourn the meeting. Um, so folks online will get put into a waiting room and then folks here will be asked to step out of the room. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion to go on a closed session pursuant to MCA two, three, dash, two, zero, three, four. A.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Kale and a second by Newt, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Um, okay, so we'll ask folks to step out of the room. Thank you so much.
I got the notice about the seventeen, but it was nothing.
Okay, welcome back. We are coming out of closed session. It's nine thirty seven PM. Um, so we will continue on down our agenda this evening. And next on the agenda is city manager comments, Mr. Gager.
Uh, thank you Chair Kale. I, uh, appreciate the, uh, commission's work tonight on the downtown master plan. And completely unrelatedly, I'm happy to report that, uh, the new garbage truck has arrived. And, uh, was, uh, put through some commissioning paces late last week and early this week. And I believe it's going to enter service in the next day or so. So, uh, Commissioner on Friday, if you'd like during our ten o'clock, maybe we'll take a little garbage truck ride.
Love to.
Uh, Dusty's riding that one, right?
I believe he is, yes, absolutely.
Him and I have been talking about that truck. I've been doing some work at his house, building some windows.
Dusty's a great guy. Uh, and I'll, I'll put the invite out to any other commissioner as well, if you'd like to see.
Commissioner Willage sit in the cab? And then maybe you'd like ride in the back.
Well, this is the commercial one, right?
Uh, actually, no, this one will be used in the, in the resident.
Res, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's my only comments. Thank you commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Commissioner comments, uh, Commissioner Willage.
Um, thank you for a, uh, another lively evening. Uh, I think I saw the new truck driving around. It's got a brand new yellow arm on it, looks great. And I look forward to a Friday morning ride and, um. Thank you for a great evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you, everyone, for, uh, your input. It helps us make better decisions. And thanks to my fellow commissioners for. For always considering as much as we feasibly can at these meetings. I appreciate everybody's input.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz.
Given the hour, I yield.
Vice Chair Newt, um, I would say. To the public, remember Reservoir Park is coming up. Public engagement at Reservoir Park, I'm excited for that, um. That was another one, I guess that would be the sixteenth thing on the list that's been. Sort of a contentious topic since I've been a commissioner, so I'm looking forward to a robust consensus-driven community conversation about. Adding a nice park on the north side, over our north side, folks. So check out the city manager newsletter for chances to engage. I yield.
Thank you. I think this Wednesday, so tomorrow, farmers market, there's going to be some engagement around. Reservoir Park.
The reservoir park team will be back out. They were here last week, they'll be back out here tomorrow, yes.
Okay, so come to the farmers market and get more information and engage, um. Thank you for our own diligent work this evening. And due to the hour, I would say I am finished. I yield and, uh, would ask, um, for a motion to adjourn. A motion by Lyons and a second by Schwartz, all in favor, say aye. Good evening, I, this will conclude the. City mission meeting at nine forty one PM.